So you will see that your, um, uh, your microphone and your video need to be muted. At the time of public input, if you are talking about an item that is not currently on our agenda, then you are welcome to speak. We are doing two minutes worth of input. Um, and, um, uh, wanted to let you know that piece. So if it's something that's not on the agenda, um, you'll give your name. Uh, we will, we will unmute you. Um, you may have to unmute on your side as well. Uh, and we need to see, we do at that point need to see your camera. So if you are on the phone and do not have a camera, um, part of the, um, the proclamation provided by the governor says that in order for you to give public comment during a zoom meeting, this type of electronic meeting, you need to be visible. Um, so you will need to turn on your camera and we'll turn it on on our side if it has been disabled. Um, so this again is an opportunity for public input on items not scheduled. Before we reach out to the public, I do have that we have a new elementary administrator. Um, in fact, two of them. So I will begin with, um, uh, Assistant Superintendent Jody Bongard.
Yes.
To be able to share out our newest members.
Thank you, President Meraldo. Uh, prior to being named, uh, principal at Cascade Ridge, our, uh, newest principal Jennifer, Jennifer Celine served as assistant principal at Grand Ridge Elementary for the past four years. And there she is on the screen. Welcome Jen. Uh, she is a long time Isaguas educator, some longevity there. Uh, Jennifer will start her 26th year in the Isaguas School District beginning in September. So she was hired in 1994 to be a special ed teacher at Isaguas Valley Elementary and stayed there until 2001, at which time she moved to Cascade Ridge to be a member of the core team. So, uh, Ms. Celine is very familiar with the Cascade Ridge community. She taught there for 15 years and taught a variety of grade levels. Uh, and then she went on to become dean of students at Cascade Ridge as well. And, uh, Jennifer is a proud graduate of Central Washington University. Welcome Jen.
Thank you. Thank you, um, Jody, and thank you Superintendent Thea and the school board members for the opportunity. As you heard, I started my career quite some time ago in Isaguas. I'm so proud of the work we do and I couldn't be more honored and excited to take on the new role. Um, in this building and community, I feel such a strong, close connection to. So I really appreciate it and thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And then with the hiring of, uh, Ms. Celine, that left an opening at Grand Ridge Elementary for an assistant principal position. And we were delighted to be able to hire and I'd like to introduce Gary Aguilar. And I see Gary just coming up on the screen there. Welcome. And, um, Gary has a unique connection to, uh, Isaguas in that he actually taught, um, with, um, our current principal at Maple Hills Elementary, Joellen Tapper. He was a teacher and she was his principal in the Renton School District. And Gary brings 15 years of elementary education experience, uh, both primary and intermediate uh, level. And he most recently was the dean of students at a middle school in the Renton School District. Um, interestingly enough, Gary has tried to attend every state university, just about in the state of Washington, uh, including Washington, uh, Western Washington University, Central Washington University, and Washington State. We're going to encourage him to get the UW in as well. Welcome Gary.
Great.
Yeah, I greatly appreciate this opportunity to be the next AP at, uh, Grand Ridge Elementary School. Looking forward to meeting the staff and students and the Grand Ridge community. Uh, I can tell you, I've had numerous, uh, warm welcomes and offers of support from district staff, uh, fellow elementary APs and principals. They already make me feel like I'm part of the team. So, uh, when my friends and family and colleagues around the area ask how it's going, I can't rave enough about the sense of community that I already feel and the support that I'm already receiving. So I'm looking forward to, uh, this great year. So thank you.
Great.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. And welcome to the Isaguas School District. Welcome to your positions in, um, those different roles for those of you that have already been here. Um, so thank you so much and we're excited. What a great year to start. Just throw you right in. Um, so the next item on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Oh, I didn't ask. I'm sorry. Is there anyone who has public comment that is not related to any items on the agenda? And I know, I think Stephen had, might have been asking beforehand. I don't know if we had gotten a list from anyone.
Emily Fried.
So I don't see Emily on here. Emily Fried, are you on the list? That wants to speak now.
Apologies, I wasn't, I didn't see an opportunity to join a list.
Oh. Hi there.
Hi.
So you have two minutes.
Thank you very much. I have a letter, uh, that I would like to read to you. We are the hundreds of nutrition service workers, office professionals, college and career specialists, paraprofessionals and transportation employees of the Isaguas School District. We welcome new families to the district verifying every student registration. We ensure food is available, prepared and distributed. We drive student safety to safely stu- safely to and from school, home and events. We ensure that education materials are available at the right location, ready when needed. Our specialists help with IEPs, 504s, bloody noses and college applications. Our office professionals interact with families every day. We have been the face of ISD during this whole global pandemic. We thank you for making the difficult decision to begin mid 2020 and 2021 school year in a fully remote environment. We respect and support the need to keep the health and safety of students and staff a top priority and move to distance learning environment in the short term. We are dedicated, talented and experienced. We are an excellent value for the wages we earn. We are loyal to Isaguas School District, making our careers here year after year as we serve as vital members of the Isaguas Community. We are the infrastructure of the Isaguas School District. Some of our union members have been notified that our jobs are at risk. We will be losing our pay and benefits. The vital infrastructure of Isaguas School District we are committed to supporting will be gutted. This is expensive and risky to the needs of Isaguas School District and families. As difficult as creating a thorough and productive remote learning environment will be, we believe it will be even more challenging to build our new normal version of hybrid and in-person education without retaining the existing infrastructure that is provided by our union members. In the coming days, weeks, months, we are committed to working with Isaguas School District to find creative and collaborative solutions to keep our members engaged as employees, stakeholders in the education and growth of Isaguas School District students. We appreciate the working relationship we've developed over the years. And we look forward to continued collaboration with creative solutions that serve the entire school district. And this is signed by me, Emily Fried, the president of the Public School Employees Union, Barb Crappy, who is the steward of the United Classified Workers for AFT 4795, Michael Rainey, CIO Local 21, and Christine Richmond, President of the Paris Union School Employees SEIU Local 925.
Great. Thank you so much for your input. Were there any other that were signed up? Stephen?
We have Samantha.
Okay Samantha?
Hi.
Hello, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Okay, I'll try to keep it as short as possible because I really don't know if it's on the agenda or not on the agenda. I just received the email five minutes before the meeting or something like that. Um, I'm a parent in the Isaguas School District and my daughter is about to start kindergarten. My son is in the ECE program. And I think it should be an issue to ask us to, um, sign up the kids, especially in the ECE program, when you guys are telling us that you're still thinking about the solution. And, that's you. And, um, when you don't have the steps that you are going to take for the ECE program, telling us to choose whether to move forward or not move forward is a little bit unfair. You put us in a very stressful position. You put us in a very unfair position. And because you put us in that position, I've decided with my husband that my kid will not continue on with the ECE program, which he very much needs. But online program will not do it for him. He needs a classroom environment. So unfortunately, we took that very difficult decision and with all its meaning. And I think that a lot of parents have expressed their concern about this. However, this was very poorly managed. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and I understand that having not seen the agenda, that you may not have known that we do have a whole discussion about COVID. So, um, and, and our reopening of schools. So that would be something that, um, if anyone else has the same type of topic, you can address it at that point. So thank you so much for, uh, your, uh, input Samantha.
Thank you.
Hey Stephen, do we have any others?
Melissa.
Okay Melissa, so if this is not related to reopening of schools, which I think is probably that or the, um, our current budget, we are having a budget hearing at the next item. Uh, you're welcome to speak. And you'll have two minutes.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Melissa. My son Damian is three years old. He, um, has developmental delays and expressive speech delays. He is on an IEP with the Isaguas School District. I would like to echo what Samantha has already said and express my dismay and concern that children with disabilities and who have IEPs are not being prioritized for in-person education services. While I understand the concerns of parent, of teachers and parents, um, regarding the coronavirus, I do believe that it is possible to provide some in-person education and support services for the children who have disabilities and desperately need them. I, I want to be quite frank, there is no high-quality online learning that can be done for a non-verbal three-year-old like myself, who cannot even pay attention to a movie for 15 minutes. Zoom preschool will not work for him. These are children who are desperately, who desperately need help. They are developmentally behind their peers. And I implore the board and the Isaguas School District to please, please prioritize some in-person schooling, at the very least, some in-person support services for young children like my son, who desperately needs it and is already behind his peers. Um, because quite frankly, we will not be participating in online learning and, um, we will be looking at other preschool options and I will be unenrolling my son. Again, I understand the position you're in. I know this is a difficult time. So just to wrap it up, I, I implore the board to please, please consider in-person education, even if it's only one day a week, for young children like myself with disabilities. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And to reiterate that, um, anything related to the reopening of schools, we will have a topic. Um, I won't interrupt the next person because we have one hour designated for public input during that time. So I don't want to be filling that up, uh, with anyone now. Um, are there any other people that are slated for a topic that is not related to an agenda item?
We have Tara Church.
Okay Tara, is this an item that is not related to the reopening of schools? Uh, and Tara, you're muted. There you go.
It has to do with food service.
Okay.
And it is with reopening.
Okay, so then we'll wait until that time.
Okay.
Thank you. And remind me if I don't call on you. Okay, are there any others?
That is all I see.
Okay, great. Thank you so much Stephen. Um, so the next item on our agenda is, um, our, the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a meeting management tool that allows us to, uh, look at regularly, um, processed items that the, comes before the board that were required by law to, um, uh, to pass and to deal with. Uh, the board has fully reviewed all the items on the consent agenda. Uh, but it just means we're not going to actually have it as part of our conversation and discussion time tonight. Any item can be pulled off by the consent agenda by any single board member for discussion. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have an, um, a motion and a second. Is there any item, any board member that would like to pull an item off the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Great, the motion passes and our consent agenda has been approved. Next on the item is, uh, the establishment of the regular agenda. Uh, Superintendent Thea, are there any changes to the regular agenda?
There are none.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So the first item of general discussion is a public hearing. So at this time, I now need to gavel in that I declare the public hearing open for the 2020, 2021 Isaguas School District Budget. Mr. Cooper, can you please come forward and present the budget to our public?
Thanks President Meraldo and Superintendent Thea. Uh, as always, feel free to, um, chime in during our budget presentation. We've, we've been doing this together for several years now. So, um, this is the beginning of the public hearing that is required under state statute for the adoption of the, uh, 2020, 21, uh, annual appropriations of the school district. Um, this, uh, hearing has been advertised twice consecutively, um, two weeks in advance pursuant to statute. We received, uh, one request for a copy of the preliminary budget and then other than that, my office has received no comments on the, uh, proposed budgets before you this evening. Um, just for point of reference, um, school districts of our size are required to adopt under state law appropriations, um, for the preceding year, about August 31st, uh, of, uh, each year. So that will come before the board for final action, uh, next board meeting, which is scheduled for the 27th of August. Um, so Ron, I'm going to share my screen if that's okay. Okay. Um, so, yeah. This will be a brief presentation. This is, um, you know, the budget is a culmination of nearly a year's worth of work for my department. We do the budget almost year round. Um, we begin in October after enrollment counts. Um, come in, in September and, uh, roll them up for enroll projections and then begin our planning in earnest, um, with cabinet and then the board. Um, so before you guide our presentation is the guide, our presentation is the guide understanding the budget, which is, um, what the district does to translate the, uh, lengthy and arcane, uh, archaic, um, F195, which is the OSPI state budget document, which is attached to the agenda for reference. If you would really like to look at that, um, it's the state required budget document, but it can be fairly overwhelming. And what this does is it provides a boil-up, um, of our current, uh, proposed budget for the board directors and also hopefully a little more friendly community, uh, guide as, um, nothing is more exhilarating than school finance. Um, at least, at least not to me. So, um, as we scroll through here, I do want to, uh, highlight a few things. And Superintendent, can you remind me how much I have on the, uh, how many minutes do I have on the agenda? If that's okay.
Um, we have 30 minutes for this hearing Jake.
Okay, thank you Superintendent Thea. Um, I will try not to take all that time. Um, but I do like to point out a few things annually and, uh, of which is, and it's something we have to watch and as we're going into an, uh, another recession or depression is the percentage of state revenue according, uh, in our operating budget. So here it's important to note that, um, the peak prior to the McCleary ruling was about 68% of our operating budget coming from the state, uh, of Washington to a low of six, just under 61% during the great recession. And then currently this budget before you is at 70.6%, um, a slight decrease from prior year, if you'll note there. Um, and that's because our, um, our levy revenue increased, uh, ever so slightly and changed the configuration. So the good news is the state is continuing to fund a large portion of our operations, which is important. However, that number I imagine will vacillate, um, in the coming biennium, given the state's budget deficit. I hope not. Um, I hope there's not a switch back to, um, a reliance on local levies to fund our schools, um, to the level they were pre-McLeary, but at the same, um, time, I thought as a number we'll have to watch. So, um, another important note on this, uh, page in particular is the, thanks to the board and the community. Um, we did run a successful two-year, um, EPNO levy. And, um, I believe, uh, Director Moore has now stricken with me all the former, um, MNO levy references in the document. Occasionally I forget them, but, um, they should be called EPNO or local levy for the readers. Um, as we move forward with our new norm, uh, nomenclature.
Jake.
You're welcome Director Moore. Um, I have learned it's often better to give Director Moore an advanced copy of any financial document that I'm providing to you also. Um, she's not on the payroll by any means, but, um, definitely earns her money as a board member reviewing these documents in advance. Um, to that end though, there was a new legislative cap provided, um, a local levy cap. Um, and prudently, um, to, uh, as we have continued to do a ground-up levy process and communicate to our citizenry exactly what we're spending their funds on, on the local levy side. And in lieu of asking just for the maximum amount, um, we came in below that cap. Um, as you can see, it's $2,380, um, below the cap of 2,500, um, statutory cap. So we have an increase in local levy revenue, but at the same time, the board was prudent enough to, uh, walk the right, uh, balance with our taxpayers and of course, um, the advice of superintendent is cabinet on how much money we needed to run the organization. So another thing I always like to highlight, um, sorry if I'm scrolling, I apologize. This is my first budget hearing on Zoom and I think it's our first public hearing on Zoom. So, um, uh, special education of course is, um, an area we like to highlight. Um, because the program, uh, as you can see, the cost of program is $36.6 million for next year. The bottom line there, uh, 1,850 approximately special education students. Um, we have birthed the three up to our ACT kiddos from 18 to 21. Um, now one thing of note and that has not changed much during my tenure here is that amount that continuously is continuously funded out of local levy dollars. You'll see that the shortfall, um, in our local contribution from our taxpayers is $10.6 million approximately to fund the program. So, um, that is driven predominantly by, well, a few factors, the state's underfunding, which the district sued over and lost at the state Supreme Court. And then the federal government's failure to fund 40% of our IDEA cost, which Director Meraldo reminds me about consistently on her trips to Washington DC.
I think they're at 14%. They got that wrong. It's 14, not 14.
Yes. So, um, and in order then to, um, provide program for our special education students, the district contributes out of its local levy funds to be able to offer, uh, the programs needed for those kids. But it's important that we, um, examine that figure annually and, uh, determine what our actual contribution is. Um, this, uh, guide boils down, uh, the whole budget into a few distinct cost centers. Um, I will get into a few of them in a minute. I did want to highlight Echo Glen. For those of you who don't know, the district, uh, provides contractual educational services for state juvenile detention center Echo Glen. This year's enrollment, it will be approximately, uh, 100 students, I believe, was our letter from the state on how many kiddos are going to be there. That program is meant to break even. Um, and we are not to provide local levy revenue to fund, um, the state's obligation uh, for that program. Uh, food service, which, um, is, uh, obviously part of our discussions this evening in our, uh, reopening plan. Um, serves approximately 8,500 lunches a day, um, one and a half million meals a year. And for the most part, um, 95% of that program is paid for by, uh, lunch fees or, um, meal charges. Um, and this is approximately $6.4 million, the current operating budget. Transportation, uh, not the greatest news on transportation from the state side. So, um, we, um, we were getting close to that 80, 85% of the, uh, cost of our transportation being funded, um, by the state. Their funding model has not kept, um, pace with our negotiated wage increases. Um, and also the governor, uh, at the end of last legislative session, there was a hold harmless provision in place and his veto stripped $1.1 million of our transportation funding. Um, so now the state is funding 76% of their obligation, um, no longer in that mid to upper 80s. So we've seen some retraction there on state funding. And, um, of course, with any categorical program, uh, for the most part, we are, uh, dependent upon the state to fund a large portion of transportation funding, or less portion of transportation operations. Um, quickly superintendent, I would like to go, um, this is the annual, um, this is a copy and paste or recitation of the budgetary goals and that the board provides, the superintendent and myself. Um, and usually adopted in January or February of each year as we go into budget creation. And so that is, uh, for your reference. Um, it provides what our fund balance should be maintained at, our resources generally guided to. Um, and, uh, also talks about administrative overhead. Uh, in this case, I always like to highlight that, um, the current King County average, and this is the last page of this document, or second to last page, uh, is 11.86% for administrative overhead. We currently set for 9%. Um, that would, uh, equate to nearly $10 million less in the classroom if we had ran at the county average for administrative overhead, just to put it in perspective. Um, another major component, uh, each year is I like to do a boil-up for everybody, um, on the major budget drivers because, um, you know, this is a sprawling budget. It's, um, several hundred millions of dollars, uh, across multiple funds. And the major drivers, of course, this year, um, an increase in state revenue. Um, probably that was an inflationary increase driven by the implicit price deflator. So there were 1.6% increase for inflation. Projected enrollment of 120 students, um, that was ratcheted down from my current models. I did want to let you know that currently as of today, I'm about 750 kids short. Um, now there's a lot of ground to cover between now and October 1. Um, however, uh, early indications, it looks like kindergarten is a bit light, even though I had ratcheted that down already. And of course with COVID-19, um, and, uh, the myriad of issues, uh, and concerns that parents have around online learning or virtual learning and the virus itself. Um, potentially there's other choices being made for education. We're just, uh, unsure of how it's all going to shake out. But as you know, enrollment is the largest driver or the driver of our revenue. Um, so we'll be watching that accordingly and I'll provide you an update, uh, at the end of the month. And of course in September and October as we get our first counts. Currently we are off pace on projection, even with the ratcheted down, um, number. Um, just to point out, because none of my models are pandemic-ready when it comes to enrollment. Um, so we will see, we will see. Um, increase of local levy authority, we talked about that earlier, of 6.6 million. Um, and for the most part, those proceeds coupled with the state revenue, um, were expended on negotiated salary increases, uh, or salary adjustments. Cause other adjustments, if they're for unrepresented staff and they're market-based and they're negotiated for, uh, for unionized, uh, represented staff. Um, the biggest bulk of that was the 4% increase for IEA. Um, our teachers' union, which runs about a million, two to 1.3 million for each percent. So they had a $4 million increase or 4% increase, uh, coming. Um, in total, 1.6 of it was funded by the state and the remainder by the district. Um, and then inflationary costs, um, to an extent, um, our budget assumes, uh, that this, this budget assumes a brick and mortar school operation. I do want to touch on that a bit. This budget was created during COVID. Um, during the pandemic, obviously we're still in it, but also, uh, it's making assumptions on state revenue and/or expenses as if we were in a brick and mortar. So I just want to be pretty, very transparent about that. Um full implementation of the school employee benefit board, so last year, we were able to cobble together the four or five million dollars additional that we were stung by the. Implementation of the school employee benefit board. Two ways, one was a use of fund balance, the other was that we did not have to have a benefit premium in the month of December. Um, so that was a one-time savings that we used to cover the additional costs of um the school employee benefit board. This budget is not a balanced budget, I do anticipate drawdown of fund balance, just as I'm anticipating drawdown of fund balance. In fiscal year nineteen twenty, and we'll talk a little bit about that in our executive limitation number five uh later in the agenda. Uh but I did want to point out that the budget before you is deficit spending. Or projected to be deficit spending, how how large that deficit, of course, will depend on enro- enrollment and um so other decisions. That we have to make uh shortly, so. To summarize, uh the general fund, a fairly flat operating budget, but for all that looms before us uh in Olympia. Beginning in January and of course, legislature is facing an eight billion dollar hole over two biennia, which um I imagine. Some of which will have to come out of K twelve, um of course, we don't know how much yet. Well, that's kind of the lar uh high-level recap of the uh operating of the general fund. And superintendent, would you like me to move quickly to the? Here, I'll do a few pie charts, no, no budget presentation would be complete without some pie charts, am I correct, Director Weaver, I I I know, or a bar chart. So the infamous where does the money come from, we touched upon this earlier, um a little over seventy percent from the state, the. The largest portion of that pie. Local tuition, gifts, fines and rents. Again, the budget is assuming that we were, we were going to be continue to run our tuition and fee-based programs, of course. With a hundred percent online remote start, um some of those uh revenues are in question. Uh local levy, we talked about fourteen percent, federal funding has remained fairly static. I do want to talk about federal funding a bit, there's a lot of chatter around CARES Act or ESSER funding. That is money that was uh provided by the federal government for um COVID response or pandemic uh expenses. Those funds were. Driven through the Title One allocation, the district only received a little over half a million dollars in COVID uh response money. For the most part, we've expended that on uh equipment as we respond um to the coronavirus, so. Thermometers. Masks, et cetera, so PPE for the most, PPE for the most part. But again, that was not a large driver of revenue for us, um because we receive very small amount of Title One funds traditionally. Any questions?
This is a presentation time, so the board, I think, will have an opportunity later on, so this is the part where we. Allow the public, so when you're done with your presentation.
You bet. Expenditures, you can see the gap, sorry, three thirty-eight, one oh nine for revenue, three hundred and forty-six point eight million in the operating fund. For expenditures. Three or four million of that is uh budgetary capacity and the rest is fund balance drawdown. So there will be an equity draw um into our savings account, for lack of better description. You can see the rough breakdown, this is classroom and I won't go into the details. Of what that exactly is, that's teachers for the most part and all the direct uh supplies, materials that support our class or that go into our classroom. Classroom support is um overhead, custodial services, um utilities, et cetera. We talked about special education, that ten point six percent of the uh operating budget. And then um food service, transportation and other grants and programs. Um, any highlights there superintendent, are we good to keep going?
No, I I I think you're covering it Jake, I know there's going to be some questions, so.
It's it's difficult when there's no interaction. On the Zoom.
I I guess Jake, one thing I would say is I'd like you to budget to get yourself a light in your office so that uh. We can actually see your face a little clearer for the future presentations, how's that?
Yeah, I'm I might have to find your light provider, that's that's true, I I I've also been told that I look better in the dark, but thanks Ron. Okay, so uh general fund budget summary, this is basically uh. Looks at the beginning fund balance, um so that would be nine, one, twenty, twenty. Where the fiscal year starts, adds in all the resources, revenue, expenditures. Looks at ending fund balance and the fund balance reservations. And um then, of course, the uh projected or calculated ending fund balance. So I do make a note here that even though the fund balance draw, um I believe it's going to be uh will end with right around thirty-six million. In total fund balance. Any questions? This is always an important slide as well, um when we look at enrollment and expenditures and staffing, so. If I am you and your governance chair and I want to take a look at, you know, what's what's the enrollment growth look like? As we said, it's pretty static, one point three percent. You know, matched to your staffing levels for the most part, which is a good sign, you know, even one point three. On the enrollment side, one point seven on the staffing side, so not completely cattywampus, that's a technical term and. A four percent increase in expenditure mostly driven by uh pay increases above inflation, so that's. That's those are the biggest drivers in that case. But nothing uh in that should concern you from a comparison standpoint. But I always like to highlight those things, particularly when you're sitting in the board chairs. That is the summary of the cost centers and one large pie chart, which that is pretty tough to go over on Zoom. But this guide is posted on the webpage and of course, on the agenda this evening. I do want to quickly go over. The other funds, so. We have been talking for the most part about the general fund or operating fund. Now, we're going to talk about the capital projects fund, so there are predominantly four funds, governments have. Governmental county has funds in it, funded county. And in this case, this is the capital projects fund, for the most part, this fund is. Created budgetarily to provide sufficient capacity for your capital projects, which you get an update on every month. Via the board report, because capital projects cross multiple fiscal years, so. This budget is assuming uh for the most part, local property tax collection, which is the capital or the critical repairs levy and tech levy. Interest earnings on funds in the bank, so we just sold our last round of bonds. That uh obviously, that amount in nine, one, twenty is going to dissipate rather quickly as we are have. Hopefully have four construction projects, large construction projects ongoing at the same time, we have two right now with two more to start. In the future. And you can see um how it's broken uh down by expenditure type. And if we were to fully expend it in a single year, we'd be left with approximately six million. As I said, that is more for capacity than anything, uh as capital projects moves across multiple fiscal years. But it is part of your budget adoption. Debt service fund, for those listening, um and the board, this is basically your mortgage, our mortgage fund, so. When the district is luck uh fortunate enough to have the backing of the voters to to pass a bond measure for uh capital improvements. We sell those bonds and then we pay the principal and interest back on those bonds, so similar to your home mortgage. We pay in uh, we pay semi-annually, though, we pay twice a year. Principal and interest on outstanding debt, so it's property taxes in sixty point five, sixty and a half million. Plus interest earnings on that cash that's sitting idle, um that's managed by the King County investment pool. A small amount of uh miscellaneous revenue and then um. Bonds redeemed, which would be principal in this case, and then interest on on said bonds of thirty-two apiece, so. At least sixty-four point six million in debt service or principal and interest on outstanding bonds. And then a a fund balance that um. Carries us forward into the next collection cycle, so and that fund balance. Drops down to that two or three million dollar range, but um depending on the timing of the uh payments uh in the in the debt service fund. Any questions on debt service, I know it's exhilarating, debt service. ASB, um I'm not sure how this budget's going to look um this year, this was planned. And put together by our kids before and remotely for the most part. And we ask them each building to uh budget revenues and expenditures in equal proportion, so if they're going to. Raise money, then they, for a certain amount, then they have to have an expenditure uh budget that uh coincides with that, so. We have a rather large and have historically had a, one of the largest ASPs in the state. Very active uh kids and advisors and parents, which is uh excellent. But have you heard me say many times, probably the most laborious amount, laborious dollars in the whole system when it comes to accounting. Finance um and just general oversight, because there's a lot, lot of little hands and. And the dollars and cents, you know, from school stores to car washes and fundraisers and things of that nature, and that all flows through the ASB fund. A great learning tool, um and we're fortunate to have it, I I don't know how that budget's going to look. In a all-online uh universe and uh we'll see, um but. That is the current aggregate ASB budgets and that look, it's not broken out by building, but that's all the buildings ASB budgets rolled up into one. Any thoughts on that superintendent?
No, just a lot of uncertainty in a COVID pandemic world.
Agree. Last uh fund is the transportation vehicle fund. Under Washington state law, you're allowed to levy taxes for the purchase of school buses. Or major rebuild, but for the most part, it's purchase of, and we were fortunate to have a um property tax levy. That has just expired and allows us to continue to get state depreciation uh funding, so the state. For example, if you front fund or buy a bus, let's say for a hundred and fifty thousand. They graciously pay that back to you over a ten or twelve-year period, including the balloon payment of the taxes at the very end. How gracious of uh the state, so you have to have local money to continue to uh buy buses and have the state. Pay you back over a lengthy period of time, and we've been fortunate enough to pass um several transportation levies um since I've been here. And we're on track currently to be able to uh exercise our bus purchase plan that was communicated to the voters in the last. Transportation of the election. I'm not going to belabor this, this is the administrative costs um comparison that we talked about earlier, um that's just the detail, those are the administrative. Uh activities um prescribed by the state. And you can see that King County averages eleven point eight six. Our actual in eighteen nineteen, since this this fiscal year is not closed yet, it was nine, three. And then this budget bef- uh before you are considered for your adoption, next meeting would have an uh overhead of nine percent. And then um a very important document, of course, is enrollment. That's our current five-year projection, um goes six years back, five years forward. And we are projecting student FTE of just under twenty-one thousand when you include running start. This this chart does not include any uh. Three to five-year-old students um or preschool-age kiddos, they are, they are not accounted for in. This chart is its K twelve. So moderate enrollment growth, one wild card and I want the board to know, I'm I'm not sure what running start's going to do. There's been an uptick um in running start the last few years. But I've also seen um a slight increase in transfer requests as well, just on the enrollment, I think I told the superintendent the day, we were, we were up about a hundred. More than prior year at this time for transfer requests out of district. And um I don't have a good read on running start yet, usually the car colleges are. A few months behind us when it comes to uh county enrollment. But there'll be two big drivers of the secondary, I believe, one will be the running start numbers and then, of course, K twelve would be. And then kindergarten, um because there are more private school options for K. Or first grade than the than um any other grade band, so we we could see a dip in K and student enrollment in kindergarten. And as well as um increased running start participation, um those are some. Could be some interesting drivers during this pandemic time, but really no way to ensure how they're all going to shake out. Okay. A lot of information. Twenty-six-page document in Zoom, I know that um. This is not your first look at our um budget and of course, the board talks um finances. Um almost every meeting in in some form or fashion and your executive limitations were also on the consent agenda this evening. Um and then there's one on the regular agenda, so. I don't believe I have anything else to add, if there's any questions from the board before you open it up to the public, um I'll take those at this time as well.
And so if the board members have any before we do the public input.
Director Moore did uh.
Director Moore and then Director Weaver.
Thank you, um hey Jake. So my question is, um as you look at it on page eleven, your budget summary and um. Money's assigned to other purposes and specifically the set asides to open our new upcoming schools, where does that stand? And then the other things that are, I think, in that category.
I just happen to have that breakdown readily available, Director Moore. So a- and this is all, this will also be detailed in part in executive limitation five, when we talk about our current financial condition. That fourteen and a half million, as it currently stands, is made up of um nine million dollars. Of set aside for our four new schools, which we've talked about before, so the board requires in your budget parameters that. The superintendent sets aside uh sufficient um funds for the opening of new school facilities, and so that. The bulk of that uh in that reserve account is the nine million dollars for future school sites. We also have in that fourteen million. There's about a million dollars each year that is in building carryover, so that's money that's allocated to the buildings. And it's allocated on a per-student basis and all twenty-four of them um approximately leave a million dollars or so a year. Unexpended and that carries over from one year to the next. There is a million dollars in reserve. For uh our coming boundary change. So the last boundary change, it uh was about one point four to one point two million dollars. To move our staff and their belongings around the district and we will have a pending boundary change. When schools are open and last cycle, I was able to use capital funds for that boundary change. I think given the uh how tight our capital budgets at this point in time, I would uh recommend that it come out of uh fund balance reserve and the general fund. But that is a forthcoming expenditure. There's also. There's still a million dollars in reserve for the. Eventual change in Liberty's schedule, which is planned uh or was planned by the board of directors. To occur when high school four opens, and so that is a uh expense that. Is predictable and forthcoming, so there there for is reserved on your balance sheet and again. The main driver of that will be the additional staffing to the run a seven-period schedule versus a block. Um, I think to round out that, there's a million dollars tucked away for curriculum and then uh in this budget, there's one and a half million for COVID nineteen. Because our our CARES Act funding is um not going to cover our need to um for COVID expenditures. Since we only have five hundred thousand dollars, that rounds it out, I believe, Director Moore.
Thank you Jake.
Yep. Any other questions?
Yeah, um and Director Moore touched on part of what I was going to ask, but again, around um the fund balance, so. For the benefit of the public and because we don't always hear those words of the proposed budget is deficit spending. The board requires a, an unrestricted reserve of three to seven percent. And I know you cover this in the EL that we're going to look at in a minute, but you want to just reassure the public that even if we're eating into the reserve, we're still.
Yep.
In that board sweet spot.
So at the ending. If ending fund balance comes in as planned, um which would be, I imagine, about thirty-six million. Or a four or five million dollar draw. Your fund balance as a percentage of your budget would. Our actual expenditures would go to just about ten point three percent. Leaving an unreserved fund balance of three point seven nine percent. So in compliance with your budget parameters and your executive limitations as well.
Okay, but a little bit on the low end of, of the range.
Yeah, particularly when we have large, a large portion for our new school startups. If we had ten to eleven percent in total with no other reservations needed, then I would be comfortable, but we are. Fund balance is there to spend in times of uncertainty. Except it is like a savings account at your home. You can only spend those funds once. So. And as when we get into EL five. I didn't want to let you know that we're about ten million dollars short of where we were this last, last time. This time last year, when it comes to our cash position. And that's because of the spending we had during, during the pandemic where. We continued operations in some cases without revenue sources. So again, our cash position is. I would say moderate, moderately strong and in line with districts of similar size. And I imagine there's many districts currently that are in deficit spending. And. It's a storm we can weather currently, but again, it, it will require continual management. As we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay.
Are there any other questions of board members, from board members?
Barney, will we get to ask questions after public input or is this our only chance?
I think to do it now so that way the public can hear what our questions are and their answers prior to giving their input. But if you have a question afterwards, I'm not gonna stop you from asking.
Okay, no, I, I have a couple of questions then.
Okay, go ahead.
So Jake. It looks like that there's one point five million reserve for COVID.
Yep.
Seems like that should be like five times or more. Is, is that, so I get what I'm asking is like, is that one point five really accurate? Budget production of how much you think that we need to allocate to spend towards all of our preparations?
Well, we, we have, this current fiscal year we're in, in nineteen twenty, we, we will probably. Have expended a million dollars or more for COVID preparation. I believe that is sufficient for one time expenditures, Dr. Gallinger, mostly on the equipment front. It would not be a sufficient reserve if, if we were going to plan on funding staff out of that allocation. For the most part. That set aside is for one time expenditures for equipment or. Other PPE we might need. So on, on that front, I think it is sufficient. If we were going to. Operate. I mean, I have, my colleagues and I have asked like back and forth on how much COVID. Can cost. And. It, it's hard to put a, put a number on it. I, I think it is sufficient. Is it abundant? No, but sufficient, yes.
Sure, I guess then, so when you do all the staff trainings that you've had to do extra for all of the. Canvas and all these other things to prepare for our remote learning. I'm assuming that's not included in that one point five, or is it? I mean, those are also one time costs.
No, we were fortunate, we had other revenue streams to pay for those professional developments. And same with the professional developments as we start. School. Now, an example of what would draw down that one point five million is. And we'll, we'll talk about it during. The update on school, the planning of opening schools, that we have to have staff come in, for example, to help us distribute technology. On a one time basis. And so there are miscellaneous salary costs. That we'll dip into that one and a half million. But I don't foresee anything. Of a large proportion on, on the COVID front for direct costs. I think most of our, our system allows us to have. Enough flexibility to cover those professional developments and trainings within our, our existing either CBAs or financial commitments.
Jake, I, I, I would just add on the PD front too. Partly what we were able to do, Director Gallagher, was. Take time that we had already contractual time that we had already negotiated in our CBAs, for example. And we may have been planning to use that time more for. Our multi-tiered system of support training and we've reprioritized. Something such as Canvas trainings and things like that. So it didn't cost additional money. We just, we had to change. Now. We're gonna, later we'll pick up and start doing the MTSS and, and some of that work again, but we just made other kind of COVID related. Professional development. We just pushed that into. Our calendar, if you will, that we had already negotiated. So it's more of a cost, but just a shift there is. In that particular expense category of PD.
And Harlan, before you go on to the next question, I do, I was, I, I did forget that we, we, we made some investments as well in, in some of your favorite areas, which I forgot to touch upon. I think Jody, Assistant Superintendent Bungard. We, we, Jody had planned to do. Transition K. As, and then we also put some more resources into equity work as well. I, I forgot to mention that in my presentation. Sorry. So go, go ahead, Dr. Gallagher.
And speaking of the equity work, so what about the, the projected costs for hardware? For distributing laptops and distributing hotspots? And like what is sort of those costs? Cause those aren't normal costs that we have, especially the hotspots part. And can you let us know how the hardware part went for this past year? Like out of all the laptops you got back, like. What was your burn rate? Like how many did you, what percent did you get back and what percent were usable for moving forward?
So good news is that. Passing a technology levy has. And communicating to our voters about the need for technology has been something the district's been doing for thirty plus years. And we have sufficient money in our capital levy or technology levy. To purchase our student, additional needs for student staff laptops, along with the hotspots as well. So. Some of that in the long term may erode, it may change some of our. Cycles, you know, our rotational cycles on laptop purchases. We've accelerated some of that. And of course, in the end, when you buy. This many extra in a single year, you, you will have a bow wave four years from now, three to four years from now, which will be in a separate levy cycle. But that is for, I just, eyes wide open when you buy, when you buy six thousand extra laptops. In a, in a year, there's, there will be a bow wave. So. Fortunately though, that did not put any pressure on the operating fund, which is a good thing. I would say, I think, and Dr. Allmey, you can help on this too, as we talked to, I talked to my IT infrastructure folks today. We dispatched thirty four hundred laptops in the spring. To students. And I believe there was still two or three hundred outstanding last I checked. And so we're working with families to get those returned. And I know Superintendent is gonna have an update for you if you wanna, if you wanna, unless you want me to let the cat out of the bag on how many laptops. That the EVP process produced. Which I can do now, or we can, we can wait. Either, either way, Harlan, we can talk about that now or later.
It's about six thousand and we are gonna talk about it later and how we'll do it. Is that correct Jake? About six thousand is where. We think we're gonna need for this, this fall's remote learning.
Yeah, a thousand plus, a thousand plus hotspots have been requested.
Yeah, we're at about fifty six hundred right now, Superintendent Thiele, at, at about noon today. We had a couple more hours of EVP process less, plus phone calls we have to follow up on. I believe we're gonna be sitting right around six thousand laptops out, which is about twenty five, twenty six hundred more than we checked out in the spring. So the. EVP process, I believe, did its job. It, we, 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 we know who needs the stuff. We just have to get it in their hands.
We're gonna talk about that later too, about our plans for that. So.
Any, any other questions, Harlan?
Yeah, my last question then is about liability. I don't see any set aside. Like potential liability, certainly going into this year. There's just so much more risk that we're assuming, like not just Issaquah, but all school districts. And so I guess I wonder, do we need to think about having some sort of reserve part for that?
Yeah, and, and in total. For reserve for uninsured risks and other contingencies, there, there's only a million dollars. In that bucket. And I thought long and hard about this and. We have. We have very good insurance coverage generally. What happens if the school district is litigated against when it comes to. COVID nineteen or negligence around that. It's still up in the air, as many, many of you know. So I, I. I did not believe it was prudent to put too much money into reserve, because. The hard part is trying to, I like the reserves to be measurable in some way. And in this case, the, the measurement of liability is almost impossible to do. Given our insurance coverage or lack thereof, and then what our risks are on litigation. So if it was a measurable. Risk, you know, as you see, you know, we, we measure out how much you over his for a school or how much we're setting aside for curriculum, et cetera. So you only have a million, you had, and you have your million dollars of board reserve. And then insurance and nobody that I'm aware of is doing any secondary underwriting on. Particularly COVID, COVID nineteen insurance, for lack of better description. So that's where we find ourselves from a liability standpoint. So there's a million there. We're insured. By the Washington Schools risk management pool. However, I think. All school districts could use some liability relief from the federal government.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I think those last set are important. And again, this, since this is a public hearing. The board takes the budget very seriously, especially when we're looking at. Kind of this deficit spending. We are fiduciarily responsible for this and. If the board remembers your WASDA training, we did the WASDA onboarding on budgets. We can be held personally liable. So this is what we get for our volunteer job. Is that we are personally liable if there were to be something where we had some type of negligence on our part. Related to the budget. So I think that is. Why we drive home really what this is. We have this public meeting and public hearing for the public to know. How your tax dollars are being spent, because that is vitally important for us, that the public is aware. So at this time. I'd like to have. And not provide an opportunity for anyone in the listening audience to provide input. So at this time, we'll be looking, and if you do not know how to use the raised hand in. In Zoom, you go under participants at the bottom of your screen and click on that. And there should be an opportunity then for you to select raise hand at the bottom of the list of things that you can do. And I see no raised hand, so I will ask again. Would anyone like to provide public input on the budget? Give a few more moments. Again, seeing no hands last time, would anyone like to provide public input? On the budget. I have to, I have to legally ask you three times. So now I've done that. I do not see any hands raised, so I declared the public hearing of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Issaquah School District Budget Closed and I call the regular board meeting back to order. So.
Jake, will you pull down your document for us now? Thank you.
Yep, sorry Superintendent.
Okay, with that. We can move to the next agenda item, which is an update on planning for the start of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. How we will do this is the superintendent, I think, has a presentation, if I recall. He's gonna present the latest information to us. We will open it up then for a public hearing regarding this item. Any public hearing, excuse me, not a public hearing, a public input related, related to this item. If you have that at that point, you can raise your hand. We will take. Two minutes per person and we will schedule no more than one hour worth of public input. And then we'll move on. I do wanna say for public input, if you hear people that are. Basically saying the same thing you want to say, please know that we can just hear it once, it will be fine. We are taking all of this in. You might see us not looking at the camera, cause we're copiously taking notes. So it's not that we don't care about what you're saying, it's that we're trying to keep our thoughts in line. And then finally, if you do not get an opportunity to speak after the one hour, please know that we also read every single email. We have received. Dozens of emails this week, so we read each one of those. We consider those just as vital as coming before us to speak. So we don't weigh one more important than the other. So if you do not get an opportunity to speak, or if you're a little shy, cause you don't wanna be recorded, which is fine. Please feel free to send us an email and that's at schoolboard@issaquah.wednet.edu. So with that, I will. Toss it to you Superintendent Thiele.
Thank you, President Meraldo. And tonight, what I thought I would do is I'm gonna, we've. We've been working on so many different aspects of this that I'm gonna, I've got a lot of my cabinet. Staff here and I'm gonna bring up certain topics and then I'm gonna ask individuals who have been working. Most closely on those to comment for me. Also recognizing that, you know, a lot, I know a couple hundred people this week, three hundred, two weeks ago. Lot of interest about this and I know whenever I record a video or send out a message, it's getting lots of viewership. So I appreciate that. I had. Specifically asked the community to, to keep plugged into us over the summer and they've done that. But I also want.
And as a note, there's about sixty people watching on, watching it live on our YouTube channel.
Excellent, yes. And thank you for that suggestion too, so that we didn't bump up to the same issue that we had two weeks ago. But I did want the public to know that the staff and I are currently working on an FAQ as well. That should be up sometime early next week, cause I know we get lots of emails and questions about. Very specific things and we wanna try to address as many of those as we can. And then also working on a virtual town hall that my, myself and some of my staff can do prior to the start of the school year. If not next week, maybe early the, the following week. Because I know folks still have a lot of questions and there's, it's just so different and so unique in what school's gonna look like. So. But before I even dive in with my staff, and I do believe this is COVID and reopening related, I just have to comment briefly. On what we heard from our classified staff tonight, because. That, first of all, thank you Emily for organizing and our other union leadership. I think that their letter spoke very well to the current. I want my employees to know is how much, and I know I'm speaking for the board here as well, and my entire admin team. How much we value their contributions and the important work that they do. And they're right, they are often the, the first face anyone sees when they encounter the ISD, whether it be a parent or a student and. They do great work supporting our students, our staff and our community. It pains me to even have to think about the idea of furloughs or layoffs. I mean. Those of you who have been on the board for a number of years know how hard we have worked to staff this place up and, and how we. Frankly pounded on Olympia to, to improve the funding system. And as Jake pointed out in the budget, they, they did it. I mean, I gotta give credit where credit is due. And I, I, you know, have been so pleased that, that we've been able to increase staffing levels and support levels. And now to have to talk about the possibility of, of this, it just, like I said, it just pains me. And, you know, I've been singing the praises of our classified employees for twenty years that I've been in this district. And I sincerely mean it. They do amazing work and I've come to know many of them over the years very well. Some of them are our longest serving employees. So we, and I, I appreciate the willingness to creatively work with us. To try to figure out something we can do to help keep these employees connected to the ISD. I just, I. I just, I, I think, I just felt like I really needed to say that. And we're going to work hard and, and we're talking with them and we're going to continue to be talking with them. And darn it, it's just a really tough situation in a pandemic world and, you know. Believe me, when I made the recommendation to you all a few weeks ago to start remotely, I knew what that meant and, and I knew what it could possibly mean. And I know the very tough predicament that our state is in and states all around our country are too, but I just hope that we, we can, our creative minds working together, we can figure something out for some of these truly amazing workers. So we are busy, busy working to get ready and for just a a little more than two weeks, the, the start of a historic opening, as our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Rich Malish, has pointed out, we're about to do something that no public school system in the history of our country has ever done. And many hundreds, if not thousands of them are going to do it with us. And that is take a brick and mortar system and open it fully remotely. And it is a big lift, but I've been really proud of the work that our teams have done up and down the, the different employee groups to, to prepare this. So, but I know there are some very specific things that folks want to know about. So I think the first one I want to touch on tonight, because we just touched on it during the budget discussion, is technology distribution. And I want to start there because without having good technology available and Wi-Fi access and good broadband, remote learning won't happen very well. And so we've been working hard and, and, you know, the logistics of getting six thousand computers out and hundreds and hundreds of Wi-Fi hotspots and, and it, it's, I hope people understand too, each one of those machines that we recollected had to be re-cloned and worked. Even then, we, as we redistribute them, we have to have folks log on to the machines there. So it's not as simple as just, it's not like checking out a book. I've learned a lot about this and I've learned tremendous appreciation for the work that those folks do. But I would like to have our Deputy Superintendent Dr. Alme talk a little bit about what the plan is to help ensure that we are going to have the tech in the hands of our students. And so that we're, they're ready to start the school year come September one.
Thank you Superintendent Thiele. Yeah, so we had a plan in place back in mid to late June, as we were starting to make our plans around some sort of hybrid schedule for some of our students and then some sort, and then students who would be a hundred percent remote. And as we've talked about over the past couple of board meetings, just in the past few weeks, those plans have changed. So we had to shift our plan to getting tech into the hands of, of folks that needed it in a hundred percent a remote environment. CFO Cooper and myself, along with the tech team, have been working, we met again today, we're finalizing our plans. We are going to have four days of tech pickup the week, starting the week before school starts. Like we had talked about earlier, we're going to be checking out roughly, our, our best guess is anywhere from twenty five hundred to twenty seven hundred additional laptops as we did in the spring. We have a streamlined way that we're going to do this. We have Wi-Fi in all of our secondary schools and a little over half of our elementary schools. So the checkout process for that is going to be a drive-through process. Where we will not have to do attestations and, and temperature checks and whatnot of folks who come through. For those probably almost six thousand folks who will come through, there will be two different stations that they will drive through that we can quickly get that tech into their hands and get that done over a four day period. Just one more thing about that is next week, everybody who registered to be, registered for a laptop through the EVP process next Wednesday, will get a text letting them know that there's an important email in their inbox from their, regarding their tech pickup. As far as the availability, the days that we will be doing that, we're going to do, stagger the hours a little bit. So on some of the days, it will be right in the heart of the day, but then on other days, we're going to, to have pickup times a little bit later for parents who, who need later pickup times. And then a, a day or two before the first pickup day, we're going to have another reminder that will go out on both text and email. And then as we go through the process, we have plans, we're going to be working with our building administration around halfway through those four days, starting to pick up the phone, because we believe that the majority of those laptops will be picked up in the first two days. And then starting to reach out to those families who haven't come and pick them up and seeing if there's families that are in need of a delivery. Deputy Montavo and folks from the Operations Department delivered probably fifty or sixty laptops this past spring. And I know that our Special Services Department helped with that as well. So we will continue to do that on an as-needed basis. Jake, I think that there's probably some details that maybe you would want to share about our pickup process that we worked really hard in, in, in trying to figure out the very best way that we could move all of those families in a, in a, in a tight window so that they could get their, get their tech and, and, and get back to their homes. If you want to talk about that.
Thanks Deputy Alme. And when Dr. Dr. Alme talked about Wi-Fi, what, what the IT department approached me with early this spring is they wanted the Wi-Fi to get boosted all the way out to the parking lots. And so it's not just Wi-Fi in traditional sense, we purposely boosted the Wi-Fi out to the parking lots, both for outdoor education and some of our summer, summer programs, but also in advance of this tech distribution. Because one way to significantly slow down the tech distribution is to do it in a traditional manner where the parent would enter into the building, temperature check, attestation, et cetera. So in this case, it's a drive-through operation, the drive-through tent one, grab the laptop, they get instructions on pulling ahead and pulling over and logging in to make sure it pings into our network. And if they have any difficulties, they go to tent two. If not, they drive off. And so that's, that's our plan for distribution. And so it was a good foresight on tech's, the technology department front to expand that Wi-Fi both. And it's good for not only this purpose in the pandemic, but you know, generally when we do any outside activity. So we thought it was a win-win both for the community, if they're using some of our outdoor areas, but also our students when they're gathering and congregating eventually outside. And then of course, this, this keeps it a no-touch operation for COVID, which we're, we're very happy with. So.
And I would add one more thing. It is our, our tech department continues to work very hard. The, the laptops that we check out to students, depending on the level that they're at, need different things. For example, some of the laptops for our younger students are, I need to have touchscreens with them. And those take a little bit different software suite on those. And then for our high school laptops, there's some different software and different cloning that goes on those due to CTE classes and whatnot. So there's, it's not that we have six thousand laptops and they're all cloned the exact same way. There's, there's a lot of differences, with some differences from, from some of the laptops that we check out to the younger students and as some of the laptops that we check out to the high school students. So our tech department is working very hard in getting all those computers cloned and ready to go. And we're going to start rolling out next week with communications to parents on pickup times. And we still have a lot, some phone calls we have to make to the EVP process. That doesn't, EVP process works really well, but that doesn't mean that we catch everybody. So right when that window closes, starting tomorrow, building administrators and counselors are picking up the phone and, and, and calling families to get that reconciled as soon as possible. So there will be additional laptops that we will need to add to that list and get out to families. Our hope is that we can finish that up by the earlier part of next week.
And, and one last thing, I did want the board and the community to know that we have sufficient inventory. We got our orders in early. The last time when you talked to Dell, which provides a significant amount of our laptops, you know, there was, there was quite a wait for, imagine nationwide demand for laptops at the moment. And so we are fortunate to have enough in inventory to assist our kids and families with remote learning. So I feel, feel like proper planning was, was done there. And I'm fortunate that we have resources to be able to buy those laptops earlier.
Yeah, thank, thank you to our community for supporting those capital budgets. I see Director Moore has a question as well.
Do you expect to be able to do this distribution before school starts? So kids are ready to go for the first day of school?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
I thought that the next topic that I would like us to talk, talk about, and I'm going to bounce around here a little bit, that I, we had some public comment about it and it's something that I know has been weighing on the minds of a lot of families as well as mine and Dr. Bailey. So I would like to have Dr. Dana Bailey, our Executive Director of Special Services, talk a little bit about our, our planning for the ISD Live and what that means for our special education students. Our IEP evaluation and reevaluation process and some thoughts that she might have about in-person teaching as we move forward in, in our, in this school year as well. So Dr. Bailey, if you could jump in there.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I know I have at least a couple of my other special education directors on this call. So if you want to be ready to chime in if you have anything extra to say. Issaquah Special Services has three priorities as we prepare to deliver FAPE safely to the twenty twenty one school year. We have a high priority to support the health and wellness of our students, our families and our staff, paying close attention to the emotional and academic needs of our students. We have invested time in building our professional capacity to support students experiencing trauma through this long school closure. And maybe their parents too. We have a high priority to deliver specially designed instruction to students with disabilities as fully as possible and is safe to do so. We have been attentive to all that's being released and published about how to build a program that supports students and in their individual needs, including the necessary therapies for students who are to receive them. We continue our work in inclusive practices, holding gentle pressure always to keep the least restrictive environment as our goal and removing roadblocks in the ways of those teachers. We have a high priority to be compliant in our documents and in our delivery. Last spring's school closure and the crisis planning around IEPs and evaluations allowed for an opportunity for parents to request to wait on these meetings until we could meet in person. As we look at the COVID concerns about meeting in person extending into the near future, we need to hold these meetings remotely. And at this point, we're well-practiced at that. In some cases, special education staff need to give assessments to students in person, and this was simply not possible last spring. This summer and into the fall, we'll be completing all the evaluations and the IEPs and will get these documents into compliance. In accordance with the guidance from OSPI and because we believe it's the right thing to do, we have prioritized in-person services for those students farthest from educational equity as soon as it becomes possible to do so. The students prioritized will be those who have the least opportunity or ability to engage in learning remotely. Our list starts with the students in special ed preschool, students in LRC two programs, the students in the ACT program, the students in the ISAT program, and the students at Echo Glen. Please note that these groups also include our most medically fragile students. And these students and their families may elect for full remote services, even if in-person services become available. The live schedules that were presented will allow for virtual live lessons by special education teachers for the specially designed instruction as stated on a student's IP. And will allow for all classes intended to be caught, taught in the co-taught model to go forward as planned with both general education and special education teachers in the virtual classroom. Remote two point O has many new opportunities for learning and access that weren't possible last spring. And I'm really looking forward to seeing those plans come to fruition. Special Services is adding to the assistive technology staff and our acquiring items that typically are used at school, but for the immediate future may be needed at home. And lastly, we know that our students with IEPs largely did not make the progress that might have been possible in a non-COVID time. And we carry that weight of worry as we make plans for this year. We recognize that the impact of this long school closure has a significant impact on our students and their families. And the same group of students who struggle to learn and to have access before COVID are struggling even more. This inequity is real and the Special Services team is aware of the need for recovery services once school resumes in person. We are focused on delivering FAPE safely and we're super excited to get started.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. And I just, again, to, to reiterate, you know, we have identified who we think is the furthest away from educational justice. It, it is many of the students that Dr. Bailey just spoke to or spoke about. And we're committed to serve them the best ways possible. And if that means finding ways to get them in person in, in a way that works for our teachers and our support staffs, we're committed to do that. And I just, I wanted to say that because I, I did hear that public testimony earlier. And, and I hope our parents know, particularly our parents of our special needs students, that second only to them in concern is Dr. Bailey and her team and myself. We, we get that. And we're going to do everything we can to serve those students to the best of our ability. Another issue that, and, and I apologize because with nine pages here, I'm not sure who's all here in this meeting right now. But I, I, I know that we've had a lot of questions and a lot of concerns around how we might address mental health issues and you, through social emotional learning integration into our ISD Live as well. And I believe Director Pam Ridenhour is, is here somewhere. And if she is, if she would just share a little bit about what she had shared with us in our all admin earlier about how we are addressing those mental health needs and the, in the socially emotional aspect of what we want to do going forward in our remote teaching. And I see you there now Pam. Thank you.
Thanks Superintendent Thiele. We have a partnership with Swedish School-Based Health Counselors. And we will continue our partnership with them and they will be using telehealth to connect with our students that need additional support. So that is still in place. We've also had conversations with our Swedish partnership in talking about bringing in some parent education that might be necessary during this time. We also have had conversations about some mindfulness for caring for our adults. Recently, I presented at our all admin meeting talking with our admin staff about what the needs are in our buildings and the things that we need to consider. And we talked about the variety of things that we need to consider when we come back to school. COVID for one, and that impact that that has social and emotionally on our students. The economic impacts that this is also having on our families. And we also talked about some of the racial inequities that have been compounded by the impact of COVID. And then also the, the nationwide mobilization for racial justice reflected in Black Lives Matter. So all of those things are things that when we come back and we address the social emotional needs of our students, we need to have in the back of our minds. And we need to be prepared to address that. Our administrators broke out in small groups and had conversations in how we were going to create safe, supportive, culturally sustaining and equitable learning environments. And how we were going to help students build relationships and authentic relationships with their classmates and also with their teachers. And then we also took some time to talk about how are we going to keep the staff in our building healthy? And, and they need to care for themselves so they are able to care for our students. So I've been compiling a list of the brainstorm ideas that our administrators came up with. And I think I might be up to six or seven pages worth of ideas on, on those two topics alone. It was inspiring for me to see the creativity and the thinking that's going into planning for the return of our students. And we also are using our, our data from last year to see which students were engaged and making those students that were not engaged our, our priority in our tiered system that we have. We're thinking about the SCL that students receive and also thinking about their new needs, the things that we may need to be considering adding into our social emotional learning curriculum. That's all a part of our tier one work that we do. And then we'll still be using our tier two and our tier three teams. And those are the teams that look at the students that need that extra help and that extra intervention. And those teams will be doing outreach to those students and seeing what, what additional supports they may need in place. I think is that's, I think is that, that's a good start. I'm sure there'll be other questions, but I'm happy to answer those as you move along.
Yeah, well, thank you Pam. And I appreciate too that the schedules that we worked out with our partners in the Issaquah Education Association built time in. our partners in the ISACUAS Education Association built time in for us to specifically address these issues. And Pam, that your team is there, ready to, to help us and fill that is much appreciated. It's another thing that's been weighing heavily on my mind, and I know on the minds of, of a lot of us, about the impact that this is having, and I, on our children in particular. But I appreciate acknowledgement too that our staff needs support as well. So, thank you for that. I thought then the next thing that we might want to touch on here is there's been questions about grading practices. And I thought, I know Dr. Almi has brought the grading group back together because as we head into remote, that was a real hot topic last spring, and I know districts were, were making different decisions and what, and, and so that, that issue I wanted to touch on a little bit here tonight, Josh, and kind of tell folks, let the board know kind of what our, where we're at with grading and our thinking as we start the year remotely.
Absolutely, and I'll, I'll probably ask Executive Directors Hood and Morse to maybe chime in and fill in the blanks where maybe I, I didn't, I wasn't able to do that, but just to get us, just to kind of give you an update of where we were. As we recall, last spring, we've got some guidance from OSPI around some grading, some grading bumpers, so to speak. For example, we were not going to give Fs. We would give incompletes and then reconcile those incompletes through our own processes. But the, we made the decision, the district made the decision that we would grade students with an A, B, C, D, and/or incomplete, and not give Fs. We were not allowed to give passes, which was something that we were really hoping we might be able to do, that we could tailor some different grading procedures for students maybe who really needed it, but that was not an option. So we met with a group of teachers, both at the high school and the middle school level, some ongoing work groups that we have. I really appreciate the work of, of the administrators and the teachers who come together and really look and, and dig into how can we get clarity, the best clarity to teachers as, as they're grading students. And what we, we decided, and the recommendation to you, Superintendent, was that, that we have all of the opportunities to give grades in a myriad of different ways that we've always had in the past that maybe we didn't have in the, this past spring, such as issuing passes to students, such as maybe grading a student if they needed on an SU, satisfactory, unsatisfactory, giving no credits and incompletes when we need to, and then having the ability to reconcile those incompletes. So what we really wanted was to go back to our traditional grading practices that give us all of the options that we've had in the past, which give us opportunities to work with students and families who very well likely could be in very different situations and, and will need flexibility and different plans. So Executive Director Hood and Morse, if you want to chime in, I'm sure I probably left a few things out there, but want to make sure that I don't do that. So I'll turn it over to you two.
Yeah, I, I think you summarized very well what we were facing and, and what our plans are for the fall.
I think the, thank you, Dr. Almi. I think the key there, the key word there is flexibility and agility of our system. And with, to Superintendent Thiele's point, really the first time we've rolled a brick-and-mortar school out in a, in a virtual environment, the need for flexibility and the need to continue working the problem. So I know we've scheduled meetings with our grading committee into the fall so we can, can monitor and adjust as the school year progresses, so we can be agile for our students. And, you know, another piece there is the engagement piece, making sure that we are monitoring the engagement. And, and honestly, it's going to be a year somewhat of continuing to learn how to best serve our kids. So it's something that we're going to continue to work on as far as how to grade and assess work and assess learning.
Yeah, and one more thing, Superintendent Thiele, I've charged our team, my team and the folks that I work with, that we have a series of meetings next week where we're going to be working with lots of different staff. And how are we going to monitor attendance asynchronously? Not every student is going to have the ability to log into every class as they begin at eight-thirty in the morning, for example, at a high school. They could have a younger sibling, and their parents maybe have to go to work each day, and maybe they need to sit with that sibling and help them, and they're going to have to access their, their learning asynchronously. How are we going to be able to work with those students, measure their attendance and their engagement asynchronously using our Common Learning Management System, using Canvas, using our homeroom system, using our Skyward system? I think we have a lot of really great ideas on the table, and we're going to bring those together next week and, and make a lot of progress on that. I'm confident that we can do that, but that's going to be a really important piece that we have in place leading into the school year is that not every student is going to be able to log on every single morning, but we need to have modes in our system where we can meet those students and we can measure their engagement, their progress, their attendance asynchronously, and continue to be in contact with those students who, you know, this is a very difficult time for a lot of families, and we need to know the challenges that our students are up against as we move into this, this new environment this spring. And we'll do it. We'll get it done. We're learning a lot as we go, but that is really the, one of the big tasks for next week. I would, I just wanted to mention that, and we'll keep coming back to that. We've got a couple of weeks before school starts, but it's going to be really important that we figure out the needs that our kids have and, and how different some of those needs are and how we can meet the needs.
Now, I, I appreciate that, and I recognize too that we'll have ongoing conversations with our teachers about how to appropriately implement a grading system in this unique remote and potentially hybrid system that could develop over the course of the year as well. So I think those will be important conversations that we'll be having with our teachers going forward as well. I, I wanted to give our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Rich Melish, also an opportunity to talk a little bit about the work, tremendous amount of work that he and his team have been doing to, again, help create and implement our ISD Live system and some of the important aspects of, of what that's going to look like as we go forward beyond, you know, just the grading and so forth. But you've heard us talk a lot about learning management systems, and maybe, Rich, you can touch on some of that, the work that's been going on there, and just anything else that you think it's important for the board to be aware of as we are rapidly approaching the start of this, this unique school year.
All right. Well, thank you, Superintendent Thiele. There is, like you said, a whole lot of work happening, and it's not just with my department staff. We had, just a few weeks ago, we had sixteen hundred and sixty-seven sign-ups for professional development on our learning management systems in a week period. We had professional, we have professional development going on around instructional practices for remote learning, some really wonderful conversations going on. We've had teacher work groups helping to develop modified scope and sequences all summer and developing essential learnings and identifying the prerequisite skills that we need to monitor to know where our gaps might be that were caused by the closures in the spring. So it's really been a system-wide partnership between multiple departments and our teachers stepping up to learn and to partner and to do work to prepare for this year. This week, I've met with several different teacher groups, and I've just been so impressed by the thinking and the imagination, the creativity, the commitment, and the, the balance that they're approaching, they're thinking about the school year with, and thinking about both the, the need to create a real, authentic learning community, and, and they're, they always lead with that. They always lead with how can we make this year feel like school? How can we make it feel like they know their teacher, they know their community, they know their peers? It's, it's top on their mind that they know that learning is built on a foundation of relationships and a learning community. So I just get more and more encouraged every time I meet with a group of teachers as we're, as we're strategizing around all the different content. And, and it's every, every content area. Our music teachers, I know that I've gotten emails about what's band going to be like, what's choir going to be like? We've been investing in software in just about every content area, even beyond our learning management, trying to find software that can make our curriculum accessible online. And so our music teachers have, are expanding their software so that students can, can collaborate musically from a distance in ways that our, our, our other software didn't quite get at. So there's going to be the arts, there's going to be the sciences and the math. We have spent some effort in trying to find diagnostic software so that our, we can monitor our math and literacy skills to really know what our students know and are able to do and identify those gaps. With our modified scope and sequence for each unit, we're working with teachers to find ways to assess what do those students need for that particular moment in time and instruction, identify which students have a gap in their skills that would cause them to have difficulty accessing that instruction, give just-in-time intervention, and provide scaffolds so while they're building those prerequisite skills, they'll be able to access the current curriculum. These are all wonderful best practices that have become super urgent and primary in our planning as we go forward this year. So there's, there's been a lot going on, and we're heading into our LMS kickoff, another round of trainings that our teachers will be doing. And then also our ISD Conference Day will reduce some more required trainings on our learning management system, and working with principals to set up trainings for, just to make sure if anybody feels any lack of confidence that they can provide a real quality live instruction, we're going to offer one more training right before school starts to really kind of make sure everybody feels confident that they can conduct, plan, schedule, monitor, record, and post live instruction with students in a quality manner. And we are going to continue to offer multiple professional developments and learning communities throughout the month of September and into October to provide the opportunity to keep digging into our practice because we know that this is new work. A lot of our teachers feel like they're heading into their first year of teaching again and are going to have to make mistakes all over again and learn from those mistakes and make adjustments. So I believe, I believe in the heart of our teachers, they're going to, they are, they are rising to the occasion, and I really believe that we're going to offer some wonderful, some wonderful learning opportunities for our community. Probably the, the last thing, the last thing I'd say is that, and there you go, it just, it just escaped my head now.
The last, huh?
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess I just, okay, now I've lost my place in my notes, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to hold your time. I'm just going to say that the partnership's going to continue. I really believe that we, we, we are ready to deliver. It, it will, our, our teachers have a very high standard for themselves, and so they, they will constantly say, I, I've got so much to do, I've got so far to go. But what I see in them is, is thinking that has turned the corner in a way that has, has kind of started to reconcile how we can deliver the ISACUAS level of expectation in this new learning environment.
I appreciate that, Rich, and it's why I say with confidence that our students, our families are going to experience a much better remote educational experience than they did last spring. I, I truly appreciate the work that our teachers are doing, that your department and really everybody is doing. And it, it, you know, I, I can, it just feels so different than it did in March when we were just slammed into this with, with very little advance notice. So thank you for all that work, and all that work that I know is going to be happening over the next couple of weeks as our teachers are returning and continuing in their professional development efforts to get ready for the start of this year. I, I wanted to, oh, I'm sorry.
I have one question for Rich. I was, I was very happy to hear, you know, band and choir, they're figuring it out. I knew they could do this because I know there was a lot of concern, and I'm sure orchestra with that, that the music, they'll figure it out. One of the subjects or areas I have, I'm just wondering how they're figuring it out are our lab science courses and how we're going to, it's primarily a high school, but maybe also in the middle school, how they'll be able to manage the lab piece of the science courses.
Yeah, that's, that is going to be a very multifaceted because there's, there's some labs that we just cannot recreate at home, just there's safety procedures and everything that we just can't recreate. So they're looking at virtual labs, they're looking at labs that they can demo, which is not ideal, but that they can get a close-up look at the, the work. They're looking at the resources embedded in some of the software of some of our new science curriculum. There, there, we're having to stretch for those. It, there, I will not claim that, you know, I'll, just as I'll claim that the arts will be different. It won't be the same. You're not going to see eighty people building a piece of music together online. We don't quite have that capability, but you might see more small ensembles. And I think what you're going to see in the sciences is some very creative combination of simulations, demonstrations, creative hands-on approaches. And we are talking about what kind of things can we actually get in their hands so they can begin to experiment somewhat at home? So there's a lot, there's a lot to work out there. The lab sciences are something that's going to take continued attention, creativity, and thinking about how we can safely and remotely deliver those, those subjects. That is going to be a challenge.
Somewhat related to our earlier discussion into Director Morris's point, we received a memo today from our risk pool warning us against home science experiments. So, you know, so the question has come up, but, you know, we, we do have, we do have some liability on that side of it too. So we have to be thoughtful. I'm glad you're being thoughtful, and our science teachers are being thoughtful about how we can do that in a, in a way that's safe, so.
Right, and you know, that's another area of kids where in, I know this could be out in the distance, but, you know, small groups of kids coming into the buildings to work on experiments someday in a, in a further out, once we get this going. But that would be another group in a very specific category that could really benefit by being in the building in small groups to be able to take advantage of labs.
I know some of that is how some of our universities are approaching that. Remote learning, but small groups coming in to do labs. So that, hopefully that time will be, we'll be able to do that in the future, for sure. I wanted to just briefly touch too on some of the equity aspects of what we're doing. And I don't, our Executive Director, Elena Sivadossen, again, she's, Elena has become kind of, to, to me, she's a bit my, my equity conscience. It's been wonderful having her as a part of the team as we are trying to make these decisions and that reminder that we need to be thinking about, you know, about issues of equity and how the decisions we're making are impacting that. And, you know, I just personally, and I, I didn't tell Elena this or anything, but I got to see one example of that here earlier this week when I arrived at the office and I saw a tent set up out in front of the office and social distancing queue. And I realized that was my equity folks and my community liaisons had put an all-call-out to families who needed help with our EVP process. And a lot of those are, you know, families where English isn't their first language, and it was great. I saw them out there, and, you know, it was an opportunity, you know, we all crave opportunities to be able to even have some kind of live interaction with another human being. Of course, all done in a COVID mitigation manner. But it was just great to see that and to see the liaisons out there and, and that, that, that community was, you know, we were reaching out to that community. And then just another example I will give, and that is whenever we're about ready to put out one of these important messages, Elena is quick to remind us, you know, we've got to get that out in multiple languages too. So I've totally appreciated that, and, and I know that's going to continue to make us a better school system going forward. So, and, and I don't even know if Executive Director Sivadossen is, is here, and if she would like to add anything to that. Oh, there you are, Elena, and so she didn't even know I was going to say that stuff. But anyway, if you had something more you wanted to add from an equity standpoint as we prepare for the reopening, Elena, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Thiele. Yes, I have appreciated also being able to collaborate with several different departments just to help provide an equity lens, whether it's with our IT department in terms of how we're doing laptop and tech distribution With teaching and learning, I know that I'll be partnering with them in terms of making a parent guide around the essential new learnings that are. Equity lens as well as a cultural lens, just knowing that not all of our families grew up in the American school system. And don't all just know how to navigate it or, or why we might be focusing on. Social emotional learning as well as our academic learning. I've also appreciated partnering with the student intervention teams and, and Pam Ridenhour. Just in terms of how are we also preparing teachers to respond to students who may have experienced trauma during the closure. And, and trauma especially due to racism. And, but just, there's many, many things that we're doing, trying to help. We've created a really cool online portal system that will allow teachers or staff members in general to be able to. Quickly identify a translator from their, from their home. They can do, they can connect with a translator on demand or schedule a translator to attend a Zoom or Teams meeting. So just always trying to think about ways that we can remove some obstacles in our system to allowing for equity and that cultural. A responsive work. So I have appreciated the, the willingness and the passion of all these different departments. To come together and really take that equity lens. It's been very nice to see.
Thank you, Elena. So I've got a couple more things, President Meraldo. I, I hopefully they will go relatively quickly. But I did want to give Executive Director Jason Morrison opportunity to provide an update. On some of our planning and I know it was touched on a little bit earlier for childcare. Because we, we are, we know that that's going to be a, there's a huge need that's going to be out there in our community for that. And well, that's not our primary mission. Anything we can do to support our community, we're going to try to do it. So. Jason, could you touch, talk a little bit about you and our, our BASK director, Weineger's plans that you have? Well, that we hope to be able to implement for the coming fall.
Certainly you Superintendent Thiele. I'd like to just start off by offering a, a public and big thanks to Nathan Weineger, our Director of School Age Care Programs. Nate and his staff and his program have been incredibly flexible, incredibly service-related for our community. Stretching back to the first closures in March, offering childcare for essential workers. And running a very successful program. And then following up with a summer program that it's currently still in session where we're serving upwards of three hundred students daily. With childcare needs and that work is being done safely. It's being done in accordance with safety guidelines, mask wearing, temperature taking, et cetera. And I, I can only begin to explain the number of positive emails from folks whose kids are participating in those. School age care programs that Nate has been receiving and he's been sharing some of them with me. That, matter of fact, we had email today from a parent with two children that were just raving about the best part of their summer was attending Nate's childcare camps. So it has not been without struggle. However, the limitations that we face due to social distancing. Due to safety precautions are having us run a program where, you know, typically we would serve a couple thousand students daily. We're not able to serve those numbers and we wish we could, but if we were in a situation where we could serve that number, we would probably be serving more students in school. But Nate has just been working hard. He and I chat weekly and try to adjust to changing situations. I'm really happy that we have been able to offer a, a, a program for our fall enrollment. We have actually sent that information out to our current BASK families. So customers that are currently part of the school age care program, we've sent information out to them, hoping that we can run a program. We believe that we will be able to serve in the neighborhood of six hundred K through five students. The cost for that program, because it's completely different, as is everything with COVID. Instead of offering before school care and after school care, it's a full day. It would be an eleven hour opportunity and the cost is, we believe, going to come in, in the mid to high eight hundred dollars per month. But the hours are, you know, well over what we would normally have students. We're going to go ahead and try to offer that at each of our elementary schools. So they will be regionally supported. And we're shooting for about forty students per site. We have some restrictions that we're facing with numbers, with social distancing. And with ensuring that we are not overpopulating a building with folks that make, could get in the way of our teaching efforts as well. So we're weighing all of those options. This, the schedule for a student would be broken down with snack time, with some free choice time, outdoor. Activity recess type recreation time, some time allotted for projects and things of that nature. But also time throughout the day where students can access their remote learning responsibilities. So we're currently planning on how we can provide laptops or if perhaps a student can provide their own technology. Where we wouldn't be able to offer any sort of one-on-one tutoring or any sort of teaching opportunity. But we would supervise students where they can access their remote learning while they were at our school age care program. So that, that's what we're shooting for. It is possible that, that, you know, maybe we grow the program as things change. But we're happy to at least be able to offer some service on, which we can offer to more folks.
Well, I, I agree. I appreciate the effort. I see Director Weaver has a question.
Yeah, sorry. Um, I was just curious because it strikes me that demand for this could be way higher than. Supply that we can offer. How is it first come, first served? How do you determine who gets in?
Well, that's a great question, Director Weaver. We're starting off with our current school age care customers. Because we understand that demand could be high for this. I do think the cost may offset some of that. And then the parents that are maybe are able to work from home and, and their kids will stay at home could, could mitigate that. So what Nate has been doing is he's been surveying his, his group for what kind of participation he believes he's going to get. And we've been landing in the neighborhood of twenty to thirty kids per building. And that's how we set our number of, our goal set of forty per building. So. You know, we also have set that number because we don't know if we can go higher than forty kids and not create. Too large of a gathering at a site and then step on the toes of maybe not following safety protocols. So. We surveyed our current customers. Again, some buildings were as low as maybe fifteen kids at that price. Some buildings were as high as maybe thirty kids. We came to the decision that forty was a good goal set for the time being. And kind of we'll see from there and monitor and adjust. One of the pieces too is, is maintaining accessibility for staff into our buildings. And we have to be cognizant of that side of the equation. So we may learn more as we go along and, you know, if. For sure, I'd love to expand it if we could, as long as we can do it safely for our kids.
So are you, sorry. Oh, I was just going to say, are, so you're offering it currently to people that are already enrolled. You, you are then going to broaden that or you're going to wait and see how many you get and how many teachers need it or?
Yeah, we're going to wait and see. We're going to start off with our current cohort and then wait and see how our numbers look prior to if we move to a full. Y'all come. And if, if that's the case, we may have to, as we do with our normal BASK program, formulate a waitlist and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Weaver.
Harlan.
Hey, Director Morse, you may have already said this, but I might have missed it. So what is the. Age that you're serving in our elementary schools? Because normally I know it's focused on sort of elementary age, but is it because of, you know, what's going on? Broader in the age group or is it still?
Yeah, great. We're focusing on serving K through five students. And at, and the sites that we would be leveraging would be strictly elementary sites. And, you know, really that's. Kind of a feeling that we have as far as elementary age students would be less likely to be able to be at home alone, if you will, compared to a secondary student. So K through five is where we're targeting our service right now.
Okay. And then since you've been running in the summer in a limited basis, has there been any need for quarantine or has there been any exposures or positive? COVID tests as a result of before and after school summer cares to your knowledge?
At the risk of, I don't want to jinx anything, but between the fall and September, I'm sorry. Between the fall program and the end of the school year and then the summer program. We have not had any cases where we've had to suspend services or anything due to a COVID exposure. So the track record of, of Director Weineger's program is really excellent. And I, I hope that we can continue providing that level of, of service, but also that level of safety. And I think that's just a tip of the cap to following the recommendations, the attestations. Asking, you know, we've been very clear with parents, if, if someone's not feeling well, stay at home. We're wearing masks. And so, yeah, at this point, Director Gallinger, we've, I, I know of no cases.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Then the last thing I, I wanted to ask Assistant Superintendent Heckman, who you know has formerly ran our HR department. But now is the Associate Superintendent of Special Projects. And boy, did we have a, a great special project for her, COVID. And one of the things that I, and it just recently came up in what Jason was saying, was to talk a little bit about. So how are we helping to keep our building safe? And what are kind of some of the protocols that she's been working on for us to get in place? Because we do know that, that there are increasing numbers of people coming back into our schools. But they have to do so in a manner that mitigates the risk of COVID. So. Lisa, if you could share a little bit about that and anything else that you think, because you've just been so critical in our planning process and, and keeping us moving forward. That you would want to share with the board and the community related to our reopening plans.
Certainly. I can't take credit for making sure that a lot of the personal protective equipment that has been disseminated to buildings is there. That is because Martin Turney, the Executive Director of Building Support and Finance, got on it early and we have not met any. Difficulty with the exception of securing enough Plexiglas to meet the, the current demand and work. So we are well, we, we have enough supplies for face coverings and face shields and gowns and appropriate. Equipment in order to pull off in-person school or school as we are currently doing it with drop buys. We just recently updated the attestations to be in line with the current Department of Health. We have those also in our six languages. So that as parents are coming to enroll their students or register their, their students and dropping by. The offices, we have those available in order to interact with them as well as communicating what our protocols are that everybody would be needing to use in order to access the building. So that is, as Director Morse has talked about and others, that there is a temperature taking. We have probably about eight buildings that are going to be using the equipment that if you've been in our administration building recently. It's the face screen where you step up and there's a quick temperature taking. We've been trying those out, knowing that they would be probably more rapid. Than using an infrared touchless thermometer, although the, the other buildings have multiples of those. There's an attestation and then there's the direction around face mask and face coverings as well as guidance on. What songs to sing as you are washing your hands routinely as part of your day, multiple hand sanitizer stations. Including for our portable buildings so that you do not have to go far at all in order to make sure that we've got healthy hand hygiene. And then talking about that repeatedly. To that end, we're going to be training our principals next week. To talk through all of the processes that it, it takes to have staff be in and out of buildings on a less than consistent basis. Meaning that they're not all showing up at the same time, that there's this kind of flow where we're going to be taking them through the training that we had done over summer school. That is augmented for us coming back and then kind of forecasting what it might be like too, once we have students. Dr. Thies has put together an isolation protocol for staff, just in case somebody, if they do get sick while they are in the building. And at work, that we can do our own miniature. It's a miniature contact tracing. We have a part of our protocol of signing in and signing out. Indicates where you were in the building and that we have certain questions we're going to ask them. Who were you in contact with? Verifying the greater than six feet or less than six feet and greater than fifteen minutes contact. So that we then move into the communication protocol so that we know which staff members, if any, were in contact with somebody who had developed symptoms. What does it mean? And are there differences between cases that are suspected, that are confirmed, that are asymptomatic, that are pre-symptomatic? I, I have learned more terms than I ever thought necessary in order to describe somebody's health as we have, as we have worked through this. And wanting to then make sure that we're ready to go for that variability of having staff in, in building as we look towards starting the school year. To that end, Superintendent Thiele and IEA President Drona Burkeholder both welcomed about eighty-six new hires to our new hire kickoff this week. And which we are all doing remotely. It is a full remote Zoom conference. And taking our, our new hires, not only through what does it mean to teach in this type of remote atmosphere. Some of them, again, having not even had the opportunity to strengthen that last spring as they were trying to do student teaching. And we're coming into this new, new environment. So they all have the technology in order to be able to participate with us. We've also included our long-term subs. Probably have about ten to fifteen of those that are going to start the school year with us, thanks to maternity leaves and paternity leaves. For this particular school year. We do have set up tomorrow a meeting with LabCorp. Thank you to Dr. Gallinger and his suggestion around talking with them about what it might mean to secure COVID testing. Or at least COVID test processing so that once we do get to return to in-person or even as we are working in this remote learning and have staff on campus. Or it sounds like going to be supporting the BASK program, that we might be able to move rapidly for support of our staff to know. Who, who has a COVID confirmed case so that we can move appropriately in order to not only support those employees. But families, et cetera, and know what part of our system we may have to close or that we may have to adjust in order to. Do our part of keeping the novel coronavirus in check. We're working also with Skyward in order to get the attestation both for staff and ultimately for students into family access to be able to do so electronically. And have a, a meeting on that as well tomorrow with the Student Information Systems and Normula. A grudzis around what that might look like and how Skyward. Can adapt in order to keep up with the changing guidance that's coming out of the Department of Health. Or Public Health, Seattle, King County, around what it is that we're supposed to be asking and interacting with around the individuals who are coming in and, in and out of our buildings. We've established COVID supervisors for every building so that we know who to communicate with. And who are going to be sort of my contacts in each building to help disseminate the information and to work again with those cases that might be. Developing as we continue to work with each other. I'm looking at my notes really quickly. I think. Human Resources is even been delivering and onboarding staff with a touchless system such that. Again, using Zoom or. uh again, using Zoom or uh interacting with them around their paperwork over over email and making appointments for fingerprints so that we don't have a lot of uh adults cross crossing paths uh as we try to get uh the new hires all all on board. Um, I think that's probably, I'll stop there. I think that's probably it down and down and dirty.
Thank you. And um I, you know, I will just share uh President Muraldo and the rest of the board. You heard probably about a third of what the kinds of things that we are um addressing in this building on a daily basis. We could go on for hours. We haven't touched on some topics that I know there are still questions in the community. Um, and again, we'll be putting out an FAQ and and providing some more um opportunities where we'll be pushing out information as well. Um, and so, you know, I I hope you can see that there's been a lot of good work, a lot of uh good thinking that is is going into the the planning for this fall. Um, and you know, and that planning will just, as you heard earlier, it will continue forward. It doesn't stop when school starts because you know, we're planning right now for our our remote opening, but we're also thinking about all of those students for this away from um our educational justice and how we can um get them back in and and working with in having the creative problem-solving opportunities with our teachers. And I guess the last thing I would say then, related to all of this, is truly, and I know I said this in the video I sent out last weekend, but it it it's a personal plea that I'm making for our citizens throughout Washington, King County, to please, please, practice the COVID mitigation strategies that we know worked. They worked for us last spring to blunt the curve of COVID. Handwashing and sanitizing, face coverings, temperature checks and attestations, physical distancing of at least six feet, and stay home if you're not feeling well. If we all do this and and I I and I know that at times I almost sound like I'm angry about this, but this is how we're going to get kids and staff back into our buildings and get back to normal. So I just implore all of us to do these things because when I, when I'm out in in our community and I see it not happening, it just feels like I'm never going to get these schools back open. And so I just really, I I really, again, I I I hope that we can all do this and uh um, because we all share the goal of wanting to get back to normal.
Oh, that's about now.
So I'm, we're gonna, I'm ready to, we're ready to take questions or or public input.
I think I had one more thing. I was expecting a little bit more discussion around the schedules, especially the high school ones, since we had so much conversation around that.
Yeah.
Eh especially given, I mean, I think it's it's going to be challenging to do the seven periods and I think that the real challenge is moving that to eight periods. It just feels like such a push to do eight periods every day twice, you know, on Mondays and Tuesdays, when they're used to a block schedule and it seems like a block schedule would work functionally.
I know there was a a lot of conversation about that. Um, Director Muraldo, I see um Executive Director Hood's camera just came back on and uh we've been providing some explanation to the folks that have emailed us directly, but I don't know. Uh Donna, do you want to talk about it? Or um I know Ri- uh Rich was involved in it and Josh um related to, how did we land where we landed? What was the discussions like? What data did we use and um I just, what your thinking was?
Yeah, Dr. Almi I I know has clicked on too and and he co-facilitated and and really helped with that secondary scheduling work group and getting it going. Jason participated as well. That group really did um think long and hard about how best to um get through COVID with a schedule that would make some sense. And I think in transitioning from a hybrid recommendation um quickly to a full remote recommendation, we wanted to honor what that group had to say. They read all the student survey data from the three comprehensive high school principals. We had students, staff and parents on the committee with us, about twenty-nine, I think, all total. Um, and we also looked at the community survey data and one thing we saw and heard a lot was that in remote learning, more frequent but shorter meets were desirable for a lot of different reasons. And the kids really felt the high school students felt that having long blocks of time was not something they wanted every day in remote learning. Um, but they saw the value of that for certain situations like a discussion, that kind of thing where you might need more time to linger. Uh, and they felt, and and the teachers too, I think, really spoke to this, that having a chance to have more frequent contact really built a sense of routine for kids and also gave them a chance to intervene more quickly if a kid was struggling with anything academically or socially, emotionally. And so the more frequent meets that were possible in a remote schedule um really seemed desirable on the academic front as well as the social and emotional front. So there was a lot of time um that we spent talking about how long we wanted to go between meets with kids uh if we could have everything we wanted. And so we really tried to let that work inform the remote schedule as much as possible. We wanted to honor the work of that group.
Thoughts about the concern um that President Muraldo raised in terms of, you know, eight classes in a day seems like a lot. What what would, how did that discussion play out?
Well, I think there's a couple of things. I think um, you know, Director Weber had us thinking long and hard when we went through the high school scheduling committee about those days when all classes would meet, even as Issaquah and Skyline transitioned to a seven-period day. So I think there's a shared sensitivity around that and Dr. Almi and I plan to bring that to the grading group as one of the chief points of feedback and concern that folks have. Not everything has to have a twenty-four hour due date and turnaround time. So how do we retain the flexibility of deadlines and timelines that we experienced this spring? Kids overwhelmingly said how much they appreciated that from their teachers. We think that should stay and remain a fundamental part of our work this fall. And giving kids advanced warning, right, with a Friday work drop time, a consistent work drop time. And theoretically, I know what's coming then for the following several days or week. So I'm hopeful that we will build some common sense approaches so that things are not asked to turn around in very short timelines. And I also want to say that the state's new um guidance around attendance, which is still fresh in our minds and we haven't processed fully with staff yet, clearly indicates that kids will um will not be penalized if they are having some access issues or um because of caring for siblings or work that they might be engaged in in the home or working after hours as well. So I I think there's a number of things the state is putting into place too that will be supportive of kid access and some of that flexibility.
Other thoughts uh from from anyone else on that topic?
I guess the one thing that I would reiterate that Donna talked about that uh was uh a a big part of the feedback that we got from our uh secondary grading group uh that we heard both uh from from students and from teachers and from parents was uh how going long periods of time during remote learning without seeing their teacher was problematic and that if they could get at least a minimum of uh uh if there's any way that we could minimize the amount of time between classes, that that would be preferential and that would be best for students. And also from a social emotional perspective is, for example, when we were working on a hybrid schedule, we were looking at both uh blocking days. So like maybe you would uh one group of students would come in on Monday, Tuesday, and another group would come in on Thursday, Friday, and and how that worked really well for building cleaning. Uh, yet from on a different perspective, what we heard from students and teachers and parents is that also it put a couple extra days between when those students would see their teachers and whatnot. And uh that was uh, that was one thing that we took from that committee in trying to build uh uh that schedule for the high school, uh uh especially for these courses that are going to end up on a high school transcript.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, so um, did you, but did you reach back out to that committee when when we made the decision to go full and remote? And I'm I'm concerned because the parent feedback I got was that, yeah, they were concerned about not seeing the teacher that much, but that's because they weren't seeing the teacher at all. And so I guess communication out to the 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 communities to, especially the high school community, to really talk about what the expectation is going to be about seeing your teacher. Um, and then I'm hoping that this is a catalyst for not just a conversation about grading practices, but homework practices. What is the homework? Why are you giving it? How much time should it be taking them? If they're spending twenty, forty minutes with you in class virtually, how much time is expected? They're already at home. And doing homework when you're already at home just feels like, give me my learning, how do I explain what it is? And and um, I think that this is such a challenging time for students that giving them that downtime, once they're done, if they've been on a Zoom all day, is going to be vitally important that they be able to do that. So I am really wondering what those conversations are going to be with teachers when it comes to not just grading practices, but homework practices. And we've had this struggle, that was actually supposed to be what my presidency this year was about. And so I'm hoping that this might be a way to fit it in somehow, that we really have to start talking about mastery-based skills and not just doing homework to have something degrade, to say, look, I produced something, but that it has to be an element that is important to the learning of the subjects that you're you're doing. So I think that's, I I'm still very, very concerned. I'd like to know if there's any way, are we going to have any point where we're reevaluating these? Because we're taking a best guess. And so I'm concerned that we're going to take a best guess and write it into stone and that there's not going to be even valuation period, you know, six weeks from now, how is it going? Is this really functioning the way we want? And if not, how are we going to switch? How are we going to switch if the parents down at Liberty are saying, yes, eight classes is just way too much and we feel like you're punishing us because we wanted to keep an eight-grade schedule, which is what the comments are that I'm getting from that community. Is that we're punishing them. And so I I can understand, and I had concerns when I first signed, and I can understand the wanting to meet teachers, but I'm concerned that the results may not may not reflect what it is we're hoping from a leadership standpoint from your departments, saying this is what we want. I'm worried about what the actual results will be.
I I think one thing that is um something that we can be hopeful about is that these are ultimately bell schedules. And bell schedules can be changed. They are not, they're not difficult to change. Uh, so that is a positive. We retained our master schedules, which is really a different product, right? That's the behind-the-scenes course creation, section creation, assignment of kids to grad requirements and that sort of thing. And um, so that that's separate. That has to remain. Um, but our bell schedules can be altered. I think one thing that Dr. Almi and I are sensitive to is that folks also really wanted um some predictability. So we're we're, we have to balance, Marnie, I think, um, you're absolutely right to raise the issue, but we want to be thinking too about how much change can people tolerate? Um, and at what point might something like that be necessary?
And I would also add to that, uh, we've, this was, this was new to us like it is to everybody. Uh, and like anything, uh, we're putting our best foot forward here. Uh, if for some reason uh uh the plans that we put in place are not working for students and staff, um, you know, but I'll I'll defer to Superintendent Thealy, but I would think in the Issaquah School District, we will always revisit those if we need to.
Right, Sydney.
On this topic, and at least reading in the feedback I've gotten on this, on this subject, I've actually been fairly conflicted with the feedback as the um eight-period day is often coupled with the complexity of choice in classes. And so a number of them are are, I've taken this very large number of um high difficulty coursework. And so I I struggle with focusing solely on the number of classes in a day and not how might we need to adjust for selected classes based on the fact that we're fully virtual? And do we have any sort of flexibility or adjustment point for a reevaluation of the of the selected course? I I I struggle, I I obviously I don't do any of these numbers of classes in a day, but I struggle with being significantly different seven periods versus eight. I'm sure there is, but each one of the notes I've read has come with a uh a concern about the selected course. And so what I'd like to understand is what, if anything, can happen or can be done to reevaluate how the selected course might impact the stress level, not just the length or number of courses in a day?
Yeah, I think that's absolutely a relevant uh component here. So we we do have a process whereby kids can request a course change. We can't always promise that in that um if if staff are already assigned to work, it may be that we are actually out of um the staff with the right endorsement, for example, to convert a section into something else. So if we hit certain thresholds of number and we had to, if we'd have to convert sections, it can be quite complex and difficult. But that said, um, we definitely through the course request process, stress balance. And I think one thing too that that I think this might sound counterintuitive, but I actually think that the frequent meets um could really help. I'm not sure that having fewer meets of a class would necessarily decrease the stress level in a rigorous course. So I I, there there's a, there's a balance there and and we did try to hit what certainly staff and students were hoping for. Uh, but I think you're absolutely right, Sydney. There there is a process whereby we can do that. And it'll be interesting to see how many such requests we get and how we can accommodate them. Uh, it's obviously going to be unique this year.
You know, I have an interesting historical perspective, particularly as it relates to that very um topic that Director Mullins just brought up in Liberty High School. I remember a time when the direction from the school board and really from the community was we need our students eh eh to be taking more AP classes. We need our students to be taking more AP examinations. And I remember a leadership team um down at Liberty High School that did a a marvelous job of moving that that school in that direction. So much so that while that team was still there, they began to have concerns that maybe the kids were overdoing it. And so then directed the counseling staff and themselves as they talked to kids. Um, you know, just to to make sure, you know, to have that conversation, do you really need to take four AP classes um this this semester? And obviously, that team was Josh and Donna and their colleagues that were there. So I I do know that the individuals that you just heard from think and care deeply about that. And um, we want kids, I want kids to be challenged. I want, I have high expectations for all of our students because I I just have constantly throughout my career been impressed and amazed by what they can accomplish. But I don't want to drive them so hard that we drive them right over the cliff. And and I believe we share that value. And um, and certainly, um, President Muraldo, we don't carve anything in stone around here. However, I also do agree with what um Executive Director Hood said. People also do want consistency. And that was something that lacked tremendously from last spring. And so we we're, we're trying to meet the needs of many, many people, many, many requests. And I and I just have to say it, um, we won't meet everyone's desire for everything. It just, it's not possible. Um, but we will certainly work with people and I believe um get a good product. And if and if it's, if the data is coming back to us that says this is just absolutely not working, well, then it, you know, we'll make changes. Um, I don't know what those changes would look like or how we would go about doing that. But um, we've had to, we've had, it wouldn't be the first time that we've ever had to reverse the course on something, but I I I do believe that that work was done with a lot of input. And I know we've heard from from a number of folks too, but um, you know, I I think part of it too is, there's a nervousness because we're, as I said at the very onset of this meeting, we're doing something historic and we're, we're moving forward. Nobody can tell you how this is going to play out because nobody's ever done it before like this. Um, but with, this is, good teachers, monitor and adjust. So we'll be monitoring the progress and if we have to adjust, then that's what we'll do. Um, I I don't know. I I kind of agree with Donna though. In this particular case, I think our students are putting a very high premium on frequent contact with their teachers and their peers, even if it's in a virtual setting like the one we're in right now. So uh, we're, we, we hear that concern. We are certainly not ignoring that concern. And um, you know, um, we're, everybody's going to do their very best and it's going to take a lot of grace and flexibility from everybody. Just like I said, last spring, when we were thrust into this with the closure of our schools, I I really do believe grace and flexibility is going to be an important com- uh component of how we go forward.
Okay, so that was uh Suzanne. We still have public input after this, so I don't know if you want to wait before.
I just, this is kind of schedule related, and it's been touched on a couple of times, so I just want a little bit more clarity. Um, Dr. Almy talked about this, and I think um. Director Hood did also, but. I think it's great that we have schedules. I think it's great that we've got our teachers doing more live interactive stuff with our students. We absolutely needed that. But we've also heard from the handful of parents and families who, for whatever reason. The parents are both working or whatever, the kid can't sit in front of the computer for those specific times. Um, and I know we've got a plan for that. Um, and Josh talked about it a little bit, but can you just lay it out a little bit more? How that will work if a kid cannot be live in their classroom? Classes, um, how do they recover? What do they do? What are the expectations? How do we know?
Yeah, I I will start with the simplest um, version. Of the state attendance rules that really are just are hot off the presses. If a student within the same day, so let's say on a Monday, Director Weaver, you are um, supposed to be attending biology class. And you don't. If that evening at six PM you log in and view the class, if you will, or read the assignment. Complete an assignment, submit something to your teacher. That that would be counted as evidence of you being present for that class that day. So they are clearly honoring asynchronous attendance, if you will. Um, through different kinds of evidence they've clearly lined out um, in the new attendance rules. And again, these rules are just for this calendar year, for this school year. Uh, but I think they'll be very much in alignment with trying to support that kind of engagement by kids.
I I do think that um, to Director Weaver's um, question to kind of add on to that a little bit. I think that there's going to be a need for a lot of communication between students and families and their teachers. And we're gonna, we're gonna be working out, I I I don't know have a better word for it. We're going to be working out deals, I guess, with people because you're. You're absolutely right, Director Weaver. We're going to have kids, um, students out there. Because of life situations, they're just not going to be able to. Match and be there for that that set schedule. The good news is, and you're absolutely right about this Executive Director Hood. Thankfully, the um, the emergency attendance whack that just came out two days ago. Accounts for that. And the only thing that can't happen is we can't have a student who never logs in, who never does anything. We don't hear from. That's the student, that's the family we have to track down. Um, and you know, we're going to, and we have, we have staff to do that and and plans to do that. Um, so we recognize, you know, that's part of the uniqueness of of what it is. I suspect the vast majority of our students are going to follow the schedule. And um, it's going to be a relatively small number that are going to need special accommodations and that we're going to have to work with, but we're committed to working with those families. And those students. I think the other thing I wanted to say about the schedule that occurred to me that I've. Um, gleaned from some of the emails we've received, I I I don't, I I don't want people to have the impression that. That schedule, that seven hour schedule that you see that. A student, the expectation is they're going to log on at eight o'clock in the morning and not log off until three in the afternoon. We don't want that. That's not, that's not good. And it's especially not good for our elementary students. And um, it's in those schedules, but sometimes you have to read it a little carefully, but. You know, there will be times when the 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 students will log on, the there'll be um, some class discussion. The teacher will will teach a lesson and the um. And then it may be they'll log off for that to go do, to do work, or they'll go into a breakout room, as we've all experienced here. And they'll work in a small group. So the intent is certainly not to have anybody in front of a screen. Um, for that many hours. I mean, it's crazy to think that somebody could sit in front of one of these screens for six or seven hours at a time.
Oh, Ron, you know. Is um, if if students aren't not always going to be able to engage synchronously when their their specific classes. If the teachers are doing direct instruction, will they be video recording it and then posting it to their website in an incredibly timely manner? Because it's going to have to be up on their website, so that's that biology student can view it that night and do some work.
Yeah, I see Natalie wanted to weigh in.
Yeah, I I was hoping that 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 wasn't getting lost in that um. Yes, there is an expectation that if you are delivering content through live instruction, it is being recorded in order to. Um, be able to have students access that. Um, because we are aware and sensitive. For lots of different reasons that students might not be able to access it at that scheduled time. Um, if you look at the elementary schedule, there was very intentional um, planning to allow for that recording to happen, just like you said. Um, uh, Ms. Moore, with the um. The breaks that are in there, like there's the direct instruction and there's a ten fifteen, I think, to ten thirty break. That was intentional to give students a break and the teacher time to up that. That's kind of upload time right then. Um, so that you're, they're not waiting until the end of the day to upload. Um, it's a little trickier at high school um, and and middle school. Probably more high school than middle school, but yes, that is the intention for those to be recorded and accessible to students in a timely manner.
And I would, and I would also add that that's the whole point of our learning management system as well, is that we, they won't have to go find it in. Six different places for their six, six different teachers. In the secondary school, those videos will reside within the course within Canvas. So it'll be very easy for them. And then either in teams or seesaw at the elementary, they'll be able to find those videos very quickly and easily.
I just know too, we're, you know, this system is not going to be uh, perfect going out of the gate, I don't believe. We're going to have. Have to, this presents some challenges for our teachers, and I appreciate how they've kind of leaned into their willingness to do this, recognizing. This is very, going to be very complicated. Um, I think, Rich, you said it early, for a lot of our teachers, it's going to feel like. Their first year of teaching all over again. But the commitment to do it is there, and and that's because they care about the kids and and we appreciate that. And. Um, again, this is part of that grace and flexibility that we keep talking about.
Any other questions before we open into public comment? Okay, I've seen some hands raised, so I will give other people an opportunity to raise their hands as well. I did want to call on Tara Church first. Uh, because she did know, we were notified before the board meeting that she was coming to speak. Again, I really want to reiterate, we're going to leave an hour for this, but the board also has an hour worth of work to do after this. So truly, if you hear somebody that um, is saying what you came to say as well. Feel free to use the uh, reaction. So again, if you go to the bottom of your screen. On the side, there's a reaction area and you can use the clap reaction. That lets the board know how many people are doing that and and we can, I have my participants pulled up on the side, so I can be looking through that. Um, so really, if you, we we will look at that and and accept that as your public input if you hear somebody saying which it. The same thing you essentially came to do, and that will help us because we have to do our business in public. So this is kind of our public meeting. This is the only time we get to meet. So we have to stick this out for as long as possible. So I don't want to interrupt public input. But um, it doesn't really help us much to hear the same thing over and over again. Um, so once we hear it, we really do, we, you'll find most of us will be typing your messages down. So with that. Ms. Church, I'd like to open it up to you. Two minutes, uh, please give your name. Uh, and attendance area or a school that you are near, so that lets them know what part of the district you're from, and then your input. And you can feel free to go.
Hi, I'm Tara Church, and I work at Endeavor. I've worked in the district for twenty six years, twenty years. I was a manager of a kitchen. Um, I have a letter here. It says, our communities are dealing with an unprecedented. Food insecurity due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. We are writing to you as advocates for the health and nutritional needs of our students and the well being of our members. As nutrition service workers, we we know that hungry kids can't learn. When the crisis began in March, our members put their lives on the line. For the well being of our community. We proudly served and provided lunches. For every student and family that needed them this last spring. We hope that the Isguas School District values the important contribution our members have made to Isaguas. We take great pride in the food that we serve and strive to meet the high quality standards that Isguas Food Service is known for. Whether the student is part of a free and reduced lunch program or not. This coming school year, in order to meet the needs of our students in the. Free and reduced school program, the district needs to provide fresh and healthy food every day. To these students. If there are severely limited pack up times or most um, pickup times or multi pack. Days, food will be wasted and storage will be an issue for families. Not to mention the homeless students we stir, that we serve. In addition, during this economically devastating times, our members, some of the lowest paid. In the Isguas School District need to be valued for their years of dedicated service to our students. In order to do this, we expect the district to continue employment for our members and find creative ways to use our talents and resources. During a health crisis, losing medical benefits would be devastating. Therefore, we ask the Isguas School District to maintain benefits for all our members. And follow the guidelines as outlined in the High Risk Employees Workers Rights Proclamation. Made by Governor Inslee, July twenty nine, twenty twenty. We look forward to finding ways to work together so that our students are able to continue to learn. And their families know that their basic needs are being met. With respect, the United Classified Workers Union, Local Forty Seven Ninety Five. Ninety percent, over ninety percent of our members signed this petition to you. And we hope that um, you would keep that in mind. I'm just a lunch lady, and I've worked for the district for over twenty five years. And I've managed two kitchens and. We. You have faith in us in serving people. In a time of crisis. Now we hope that you, we can have faith in you and keeping our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you for your uh, input, and I do want to recognize that we saw many of your uh, members that are with you. Um, so we, I gave a little extra time because I wanted, I knew you were speaking on behalf of several people, so thank you for coming and sharing your input today. Um, oh, and I did not say this at the beginning, so I I apologize. This is public input, and sometimes it can feel very. One way, and that's because it really is. So we typically you will not have comments from the board, so this is your chance to. Input your comments to us, but there's not a two way response, so um, I my apologies for not mentioning that earlier. Next, I have uh, Kat Hawk.
Hi, I am, am the mother of four elementary age children at Challenger, and I'm also an educator. And listening today, I was hearing that there will be childcare offered at the local elementary schools for up to forty children. And my big question and concern is, it, we are opening those schools up to forty children for childcare. But I don't understand how we can't open up the schools. For the IEP kids and the five oh four kids and the disadvantaged kids and the ELL kids. And the children of color and the children who are hungry and struggling at homes and. My kids are going to be okay. I have a master's degree in education. I'm going to have four kids. In elementary school homeschooling, but mine aren't going to be the ones that are hurting, and I'm deeply, deeply concerned. About the disadvantaged kids in our district, and. I know that from my, my former coworkers in New York City, they have um, set up. They, in the spring, they set up their school buildings to be like community centers where a teacher could choose to do her learning. With those kids who needed it at that school building, maintaining physical distance. And so I'm just looking at all of our schools, and I can't understand why these schools are going to remain empty. I I hope that we can find room um, from the beginning for there to be labs or learning centers or. Places for the LRC kids who are already in a small group. Already to be able to go in and learn because. We really are setting a generation behind for those kids who are disadvantaged, and my heart breaks for them, and I hope. That we can do more. If we can serve forty kids who have eight hundred dollars a month. In those schools, we should be able to be, serve forty of our own high needs kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Carrie Kiefer.
Hi, um, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I, something you guys said um, touched a nerve with me, and I just. I couldn't be more thrilled at the idea of this live learning. It was what um, so many of us parents were begging for. After having none in the spring. Um, I never really expected us to go from nothing to seven classes, seven forty five minute classes in a day, to be quite honest. So going to that extreme, I know, Ron, you mentioned, you know, none of us really think that would be crazy to sit there for. You know, all those hours in a day, but. I don't understand how these teachers are going to monitor what the other teachers are doing. So say my kid's first period. Decides to do a whole forty five minute lesson, but so does his second and third and fourth. Because they don't know what the other teachers are doing. So now they've sat there for this near seven hours a day. And who knows how many of them, to Marnie's point, are now giving homework on top of that for later that night, so that's however many more hours at home. On the screen. So. I'm curious if there's going to be any kind of structure on those two days where they go to the seven full classes in each day. Where there's a way to know. Okay, are you staying in class for the whole forty five minutes so that, are they going to be sitting there for eight, sevenish hours in a day? So I just kind of wanted to mention, I know, Ron, you mentioned, you think it's crazy, and so I think so does everybody. None of us want our kids on the screen that much. It was bad enough in the spring. But they're playing video games at that time, but now we're going to be learning. And that's a lot of hours in front of the screen, so I just am concerned that um, that be monitored. In one way or another, and I don't know how that, I don't know how that looks, but it's, it's important. And then to make sure we follow that up with what is homework on those two nights look like, so there is not more screen time for them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next I have Chris McCullough.
Good evening. Um, I'd like to address something that has not been discussed here tonight. And that is.
Where you're, where uh, the attendance area?
I'm sorry?
The attendance area, like where in the district you live?
Oh, uh, we live near uh, Briarwood.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so sorry. So uh, my four year old is not being served. So I haven't heard any sort of plan for him. He's autistic, he's nonverbal. And everything in his IEP. Is about in person learning, everything. We watched him this last spring emotionally and psychologically melt down. It was, it was heart wrenching. How do I explain to my, to my son? A child who's nonverbal, that he can't go to school. He comes to me with a school backpack. And a bus, a toy bus. And he's communicating to me through that manner that he wants to go to school. And I can't, there's nothing I can do for him. I haven't heard of any sort of preschool schedule. I haven't heard of any sort of plan. I mean, now, right now, we've got him in Briarwood early for the simple reason of early intervention. If we do not get him. Back into school, as other parents, I'm sure, are in the same position. These, these, these are critical years. If they do, if they miss a full year of in person. Education. They're not going to be able to advocate for themselves. They're not going to be able to speak. They're going to have all sorts of issues. When it's time for them to join the general ed kindergarten classes. It's, it's unacceptable. I mean, we've got to come up with some sort of plan, and this group keeps getting overlooked. Also, I'd like to touch on that that the BASC program. Even during the best of times, doesn't provide any care for preschool children. So this is, this is a whole group of children that, for some reason, is falling through the cracks here, and as a parent. It's just, I feel it needs to be addressed. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, John Lillygren. John Lillygren.
Very well said, President Raldo. Spot on. You know, you're Swedish. My name is Jonathan.
I actually am part Swedish.
Yeah, there you go. My name is Jonathan Lillygren and my son is a rising first grader at Isiqua Elementary. And I'll begin my comments by expressing my thanks to my child's prior kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Rudy, and the entire kindergarten team at IV for their impressive ability to pivot this spring and deliver remote learning. My son will forever be a Rudy Reader and we are all now budding ASL linguists. So a public thank you to Mrs. Rudy. I appreciate the update from the superintendent and his staff on the return to school plans. And as parents, we too have been gunned to organize to better support our students in the ISD live schedule proposed for this fall. We and many of our friends have begun organizing groups with other parents of children in the same grade to support each other in balancing the demands of work with the need to support our students in meeting the schedules outlined by the school district. Unfortunately, I have heard that as some parents have contacted their school to request their children be placed in the same class to better facilitate the learning for their student group, they have received a tempered response, often citing efforts done by teachers in the spring to create class rosters. In the materials, the superintendent included the agenda today, there was a document titled Decision Tree for Provision of In-Person Learning Among Public and Private K-12 Students During COVID-19. In that document, it highlights the need to group students as part of COVID-19 safety measures for returning to school. Given the conclusion of online verification today, I would ask that schools support and accommodate requests for same-class enrollment for these parent-organized as-student groups as schools undertake the realignment that will be needed as in class rosters due to changes in enrollment and to support the COVID-19 guidelines to group students. I would suggest that similar to the spring, schools could provide a simple Google form for parents to submit to the students who are either working together in parent groups or who will have regular interaction within their communities. On a separate note, as a former university adjunct faculty, I am thrilled with the district's excellent choice to adopt Canvas and hope all will enjoy that learning platform this fall as I have for the last eight years in my teaching. I would also echo other comments and encourage you to consider adjusting the high school schedule to prepare students for higher education. The most typical pattern in higher education is two in-person classes per week and labs or office hours for student support. Familiarizing students in high school with this pattern and the importance of taking advantage of office hours could be of significant benefit, especially to rising seniors. Thank you for your efforts to innovate online education for this fall and we look forward to supporting our children, teachers, and fellow parents as we embark again on this joint effort of virtual education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Christina Riley.
Trying to get myself on, there we go. Hello, I'm Christina Riley. I am a mom of a rising second grader at Endeavor. And I just have a couple of comments that have come up for me as I've been listening all evening with you. And I just wanna thank all of you for providing so much more context than we had gotten at the last school district board meeting. It's been really helpful as a parent for me to kinda hear all of those plans. Some questions that still stand out though are things like, what are our actual metrics for deciding when we do move back to a hybrid model? Is it that we need to hit that twenty-five to seventy-five cases? Are we in that moderate range? I too noticed the decision tree that was listed in some of the documents today. And so it's unclear to me whether that is our metric for when we decide to move or whether this is just a guideline or what our district has decided to do. And then related to that, if we do hit that two weeks of that twenty-five to seventy-five cases, how quickly do we move to those in-person or hybrid models? Because is it that we look six months out or we start looking three months out and that's when we start moving to the hybrid? It raises those kinds of questions for me still. And the other couple of things I'd like to mention is just thinking about equity in addition to your grading practices that were mentioned today. I know there was a lot of, lot of emphasis around flexibility and I appreciate that. But grading practices is really difficult because what you're really grading is how well a parent is going to be able to help their child through that content. It's maybe not necessarily how much that child actually understands that content or masters the content. It's how much me as a mom, I'm able to sit here and help my second grader through that work. And so I just want you to be mindful of equity in, in making those decisions about your grading practices. And then I, another note that just hasn't come up, but was kind of brought up by one of the previous comments was that there are a lot of parents who are choosing to hold back their incoming kindergarteners because of the online move. And that's going to have a massive impact in your twenty-one, twenty-two school year, which means you're gonna have a huge influx of kindergarteners when you may not have anticipated that. And so it might be worth starting to think about budgeting and your teacher loads for the following school year in addition to that. And then last, sorry, guys, one more praise real quick for the BASC summer camp. My kids are in the BASC and my daughter's been attending summer camp all year and we love it. We absolutely love the staff. We feel safe. We've done a fantastic job of monitoring and she's a totally different kid than she was in the spring because she's getting to be there to see her friends. So I just wanna thank, thank you all for making that an option. We have loved it and just wanna thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your input. Uh, Dorona Burkholder.
Hi, I'm Dorona Burkholder, Isiqua Education Association President. And I wanted to start off with, I definitely understand the difficulty of the conversations around remote learning and opening a hundred percent remotely. I've been sitting on these long bargaining sessions with my bargaining team and the Isiqua bargaining team as teachers trying to figure out how this is going to look for families and students and how we as educators wanna make it better. But I'm actually here tonight because it's with a heavy heart that I hear that the Isiqua district and school board might be considering laying off or furloughing some of our Isiqua employees. And that's really hard to hear because as a union member, I wanna be here to support other union members. And I know as a teacher, a fourth grade teacher at Sunny Hills, I couldn't do my job without my other union brothers and sisters from the food service industry, from the bus drivers to the paras. And in a time when there's so much uncertainty, how can we say we can let some of our employees go? They're like our family members and they're there for our students. And many of them know our students on a personal level. So I would ask that the school board and the district think creatively and to crunch those numbers to support and keep all of our employees whole as we go into remote learning in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Last I have Raquel Cause.
Hi, I wanna just kinda jump on the bandwagon here, we can just at the end regarding grading, especially for high schoolers specifically. I have a daughter at the high school. She's going to be a junior.
And which high school is that?
Isiqua High.
Okay, thank you.
And then a middle schooler at Isiqua Middle. But specifically for the high, for these high school kids who, as I just finished touring three more colleges virtually, but going in person also with her to look. Our kids are gonna be competing against kids from all over the country to get into top colleges. And these kids have worked for many years not knowing this pandemic was going to happen. And I feel like we should aspire these kids to be on the computer for attendance, for participating, for daily assignments and have less pressure for grading. So for example, if you're in an Algebra II or Precálculus and you have twenty questions with the grading scale that Isiqua has currently, the student is only able to miss one problem out of twenty in order to get an A. That seems like a lot of pressure of a kid who's teaching themselves at home and so I.
Oh, you're muted. We can't hear you anymore.
I couldn't hear.
Raquel, you're muted. For some reason, we can't hear you.
She's not muted. That's a network error on her end.
I think it's your internet. Okay. Thank you. We did get that though, that really looking at the grading policies and those things. So thank you for sharing. I'm glad that some brought up, I asked Superintendent Thiele to attach the the Washington State Public Health Decision Tree. Because this is a lot of the information that we would utilize in a process. So we will continue to look at this and I know Ron and his staff are going to be looking at this with regards to what do we do about getting students back in the building? And I don't know if anyone had any questions. Okay, I see Harlan's hand up. Good. To kinda talk about this, cuz I think it is an important piece of documentation. I will reiterate what I said in the last meeting when Ron and I talked about why are we deciding to close schools and why is the governor deciding to shut down schools? What data is he looking at? We thought that's important for us to know cuz whatever that data is, we're gonna need data on how to reopen and what do we need to be looking at? So over the course of the past six months is where we've really, or five months, whatever it's been, it feels like a year and a half. It's been important for us to know what are some of those data points. So Harlan, I'll let you speak more specifically about this.
Sure. I was just waiting to follow our normal process of airing public input before we talk. So I have some questions and I appreciated you having this attached to the board agenda because I think it lets folks know that this is where we're headed. We'll talk about more of this in legislative matters, but we've been asking for this guidance for the past couple of months. And I'm excited that it actually provides a lot of opportunity and you'll see it reflects a lot of what the board discussed at our last meeting, especially with regard to educational equity or justice. And so my questions for the superintendent are, you know, we said in our resolution that we would be periodically reviewing sort of what this would mean. So I guess I would love to know what you have as far as a timeline for when you might provide an update to the board for some sort of phased-in approach to in-person learning. We've heard from Dana Bailey about the importance of that for our special education students. You know, you've heard me particularly advocate for our youngest learners. And we know that the county is gonna partner with Institute for Disease Modeling and release some new data tomorrow, which talks about being able to open or the impact of opening schools to kindergarten and first grade and showing that it doesn't have an impact on community transmission. So I would like to know what the update is for us to expect that. And then because, you know, currently it says for greater than seventy-five per hundred thousand transmission, which is where we're at. So it says we could already serve in person for special education, young learners, et cetera, et cetera. And then the second question is, is we heard a lot last meeting from our staff saying, well, just because Isquah School District is in a low transmission community, what about all of us who commute in from the, from other surrounding areas? So I guess I would like to hear and get to answer the question. Maybe you can't answer tonight, but the answer sometime in the next week on where do our teachers come from? Because I think it would be powerful to say, gosh, not only has the county now said that serving younger students in-person learning doesn't affect community transmission, but also to say, well, eighty percent of our staff come from, all of these communities are sharing our low transmission. But I don't, I don't know if that's true cuz I don't know where our staff live. So those are my two questions.
So I, to kinda take him in order, Harlan, I don't have a solid answer on the phasing. You heard some of our conversation earlier tonight that we are focusing first on our LRC two population. We're meeting next week to discuss what it might look like. Obviously, you know, we have to, we have to work with our educators too. They have to, they have to feel like the environment is an environment that has a, the appropriate amount of risk for, for them to return. And that's what a lot of our conversations are about. And I think we have to help them understand that. I've had to learn and, you know, you and I have had many conversations about this. I've had conversations with public health around just trying to understand what some of these factors or indicators are that would tell us that it's safe to start or it's appropriate to start bringing staff and students back in, whether it be in a limited form or not. And I'm of the mind that right now is why we should be talking about our LRC two students. Because as you pointed out, in the guidance, it says you certainly could, could do that, small groups of students. And I believe those would be small groups of students. I think, you know, we haven't talked a lot about some of the other groups such as our, some of our ELL students, in particular our young Level One ELL students. It may, it may be that they're an important group that we have to try to get into some in-person instruction as well. So my hope would be, and we, we kinda talked around this earlier as we talked about the possibility of having to dismantle some of the infrastructure that makes this place happen. You know, the idea that it's, once we get to a place where we have an agreement that this is a group we need to bring in, we wanna bring in, the data is telling us that it would be appropriate to bring them in. It's about a two, two to three-week turn on that is what I'm understanding from transportation. So if the goal, so if we're working on that now, and it is challenging because we're, the bulk of our energy is being consumed around trying to have the best remote school opening that we can as well. So it's hard for me to get all my folks, you know, working on both of those problems simultaneously. But, but they are, but we are doing that. I mean, we've made some good progress. And again, I just, I thank Dorana and her team and Natalie and our team because I do think we've made some real good progress that's gonna allow us to kinda pivot and start thinking some more about what the coming weeks might look like. As you've explained to me, Dr. Gallinger, that, you know, the, the goal would be to get some of these, these groups, you know, and I heard the input from some of those preschool families and particular ECC families and, and the like that to get them in and experience some in-person education. Because if we have another outbreak during flu season, there's a good possibility we could get closed down again. So, or we could get them in and prove, you know, kind of like we've done with childcare, that we can do this safely. And, and maybe we, we wouldn't have to experience ins and outs. So I really, I think, how do I say this? I think part of it is we have to be able to convince people that we can do this in a way that is gonna keep people, you know, that we're gonna mitigate. We, we can never promise that there won't be a COVID case in our schools. I can't promise you there won't be a measles case in one of our schools because frankly, we've had it. And so my hope would be, you know, that we are, we are starting that planning process now, but it is one that it can't happen in a vacuum. It has to happen in conjunction with our teachers. So I mean, I, I have a, I have a belief that we could make some good progress on that. And to your second point, Dr. Gallinger, what I do know is that about less than half of my teachers reside in, in our Isiqua Samamis communities. I think that's, those are the communities that I've highlighted. But I think your point is well-made that we need to be looking at those rates in the Riverview School District, the Snoqualmie Valley School District, the Tahoma School District, in the Seattle School District. Because I, I suspect we're gonna find that's where a lot of our employees who don't live in our districts live. And if those districts and those regions or zip codes are experiencing similar low levels like Isiqua and Samamis, I think that will give confidence to our, to our staff as well. That that we can, we can do this. We can start bringing staff and students back in for more in-person experiences. That's so. So I recognize we have to have a broader picture. But I would venture to say, and I really don't know, and I we will get.
I can give you a number, Ron, if you'd like.
Please. Yes.
Sure. Okay. So twenty-six, I'm sorry. Forty point six percent of our entire staff live within the boundaries of Issaquah-Semamish. Of our teachers, twenty-three percent live in in Issaquah and fourteen percent live in Semamish, so thirty-six point two percent live in the Issaquah-Semamish area. We have staff who come from as far as Black Diamond, Federal Way, Monroe, Ravensdale, Snohomish, Spanaway, Tacoma. So we have staff that come from those breadths as well as a number that come from Bellevue and, you know, Bothell and Redmond and Kirkland, places that are that are closer. So forty point six percent are within district.
Yeah. So, you know, if, you know, I recall, and this is old data that I think actually even IEA gathered at one time. I think the second largest community that our folks, our teachers came from was Seattle at that time, if I'm not mistaken. And I know there was a lot of West Seattle, if I recall. But I suspect we also have a lot of Maple Valley and Snoqualmie North Bend area as well. And I just say that because, you know, as somebody who lived in Issaquah in the nineteen ninety-one. And you, when you looked for housing, my wife and I made the decision that many of my staff have made over the years to to go to Maple Valley at that time because housing was more affordable. So I suspect we're going to find we have a lot of them out there. So it does matter what the the rates of COVID are in those communities, I think. Because again, I it's it's in part, it's about, yes, the science. But it's also about, we've got to help people understand the science and feel competent and 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 to a degree that they can come back in. So I know we've got some work to do on that, Director Gallagher, in terms of getting some more precise data about where our staff are coming from, particularly our teaching staff. We know that sixty percent of them roughly aren't here. But we don't know how, you know, I know we have them that are kind of on those far reaches. But if I if I was to venture a guess, I think we're going to find a lot of them within about a half hour drive of the place as well.
So drilling down on that data is going to be really important for us to then identify what are the the health metrics that we need to be looking at for reopening. So I definitely would love to know sort of what that is. And then responding to your first one, it sounds like we need to hear from the our district administration on whatever the negotiations are with our teachers to decide how much support staff our district needs. It sounds like our teacher is going to be the bigger one driving that conversation or a partnership with the district as far as if we're going to go into any phase of reopening, then we will certainly need support staff to do that. So.
Absolutely.
Or we do reopening and partnership with our teachers, more support staff will need. Is that what I'm hearing? There's a connection there?
I absolutely would say that, yes, that if, if, you know, if you think about it, every time we can, we are confident it can bring in a group, that's going to require bus drivers. Because we're going to provide transportation, that's going to provide food service. That's going to, you know, we are, our support staff, again, I agree with Dorana, I agree with what our our support staff have shared here tonight. They are integral into our ability to serve our students. But so much of it is dependent upon our students actually getting into school. And so getting them there. And so I think absolutely there is a connection between our ability to bring students in and to retain and use more of our classified employees. I don't know how else to say.
Sure. So for me, speaking for me, then knowing if there's going to be any further conversation on what amount of support staff we need, I would need to know what has the the district and the IEA negotiated as far as for any sort of planned phase of in-person learning. Because those two go hand in hand, and I would need to know, one, in order to build that, sort of have an opinion on the other.
Yeah. No, fair point. And and again, I do want to say, I know that when I, when I came back from my my four days that I took off and and things were changing quickly in the world, if you recall. Most of our initial planning was all for in-person hybrid. And then we shifted and the teams needed to shift to be prepared for a full remote system. They've done, they have chopped a lot of wood in the last couple of weeks. And I think because of that, they're going to allow us a space where we can then go back and start talking about the hybrid and the phase in of of students. I'm anxious to start having that conversation. And so I think the timing will be right.
Got it. Oh, you you guys have done an impressive amount of work over this summer that was supposed to be timed to to refuel and renew. So hats off to to you and your administrative team. My last plug would be, I would continue to plug based on every guidance we've heard from every level, federal, state, county. The public health guidance continues to say cohorting is the best thing we can do. So I would make a plug for cohorting our middle school students before we even opened remote learning. Because I think if you co-horted the students, it would basically for their core courses look like elementary school. And we've heard you, you know, over and over about how much safer that would be. And then if you did that, I think you could consider stagger starting your middle schools by grade level, which would pull your transportation staff and then allow only about two hundred kids to be entering and exiting the building at one time. And really prevent that sort of widespread movement across the building that would make it nearly impossible to mitigate all that risk. So those are my two plugs.
Thank you for that, that good thinking.
Any other questions or comments? And I do want to reiterate to the participants that are still here, the public, that feel free if you want to email us. Again, our email is schoolboard@issaquah.wednet.edu. You can always find us on the district website. By emailing that school board link, though, you get it to all five of us, the superintendent and his assistant, and will likely get you a faster, faster acknowledgement of your email because I gotta admit, I didn't get to it until, yes, well, one, a few on Monday and then some today. Thank you for that conversation. We went a tiny bit over schedule. So with that, we will go to EL five, I believe, is the next thing on our agenda.
It is.
We are only an hour and a half late.
You want a motion?
I would love a motion.
I move the board accept the annual monitoring report for EL five, actual financial condition and activities, internal annual audit report as presented.
Okay, so Susan's made a motion and has seconded it. Is there information from staff you'd like to share?
I don't know if Mr. Cooper was going to plan to zoom back in for this conversation or not. But this, this is a, oh, there he is.
I'm still awake. It's ten, it's almost ten o'clock.
Yeah. I I don't want to steal his thunder. I want to get, let him have the option because there's some, I think, some very good work that his department has done here. And particularly when we talk about our financial audits. So I think I need to let Jake Jake share some of that. I know it's not news to the board. But I, it's something we take a lot of pride in, is our sound fiscal management of the district. And this is an opportunity for us to kind of talk about that.
Thank you, Senator Thiele. And I will be, try to be as concise with my words as possible. I did want the public to know that this is executive limitation number five. There are three ELs in this series, EL four, five, and six. Executive limitations four and six. We're on a consent agenda for the board's consideration this evening, and we will be reviewing five, which is actual financial conditions. And again, Superman alluded to, we are fortunate to have a culture of accountability that's created from the board all the way downward into the buildings. And it's our eighteenth consecutive clean audit in a row, which we've talked about before. But it is a way that we verify via outside auditors, nearly four hundred hours of audit work on site. Your compliance with state and local laws and regulations, as well as presentation of your financial statements and expenditure of federal proceeds or federal funds. So that is one highlight I like to talk about. Another important note in executive limitation number five, at least for me, when I'm preparing and reviewing this, Ron, is we talk about our, how we procure items, and I want with the, we competitively competitively procure or bid almost everything that comes through the doors. And we do that, and you see on your board agenda quite often interlocal agreements or cooperative agreements and arrangements has to allow us to get the best pricing under state statute. It's called piggybacking. We do that quite frequently, or we aggressively bid our own items as we procure them. So in this page here, we talk about some of those groups we're in, ACDA, US Communities, WCA, et cetera. We talk about piggybacking. Another thing that I think is always fairly impressive, and I know Dr. Gallagher is in medicine, obviously, and if hospitals had that rate of uncollectible debt, they would be in much better financial shape than they currently are, just because they run a higher rate. But it is something we we talk about in in this, and this is about our our collection procedures and our invoiced revenue. And you can see that of all the revenue, only twenty basis points of that was uncollected, which is a phenomenal collection rate for any enterprise. So and so the next portion of the document is the reserve and fund balance reserve. And so the additional information section is kind of details out with that verbal response that I gave Director Moore about four hours ago in the meeting, maybe three hours ago in the meeting. And he talks about, it lays out in narrative fashion what is proposed in the twenty twenty-one general fund operating budget for set asides in your savings account, for lack of a better description. Any questions on that portion? And evidence compliance, the next, the next portion talks about the amounts we reserve for each type of building. So you're looking at one, one and a half million for each elementary, two and a half million for a middle, and then three million dollars for the the new overhead for a comprehensive high school. And so that, of course, adds up to nine million if your CFO can add, just occasionally I can. But that lays out why those numbers reach that nine billion dollar mark. Your one million dollar reserve, which you have dipped into, I believe, only once in my career, but it was very thoughtfully done, and we replenished that as we're required to. And that was for the early implementation of whole day kindergarten. And so, you know, as times get tough, we may call upon you again to dip into your reserve for future items, but we will, we will talk about that in future meetings. But that is there for the board to exercise appropriately. Now, this is what I really wanted to highlight in this report. When I looked at executive limitation five, and this is the fund balance as of May thirty-first. So this is not fiscal year end, fiscal year end for your edification is eight thirty-one. So the end of this month, we're currently in now. This is a snapshot from the most recently closed fiscal month for the district. And you can see that right now, in total, our fund balance is thirteen point six percent of the total operating budget. That is our cash position. And I don't know if you've been watching the budget stash reports, which you provide on your consent agenda. Our cash position currently is about ten million dollars less than it was at the same time last year. And a big portion of that is, has to do with the amount of funds we expended during the original spring pandemic. So we are burning cash at a relatively high rate. Some of it was anticipated, some of it was not. I believe any fund balances noted is going to be around forty-one million, which then the following year, as deficit spending continues, we should burn another four or five million in fund balance and be down to thirty-six. But I did want you to note that I know that I I get, I get teased and given a hard time about fund balance from all parties. There's no right number. It's the Cinderella of all numbers. Too much, too little, not enough. Is it ever going to go down? And that question would be, yes, it it is going down, Superintendent Thiele. And I just want to point out that our cash position, again, is approximately ten million dollars less than it was the same time last fiscal year. Any questions on the breakdown of your current reserves or cash cash position as of May? Okay. I think those are the major highlights in EL five, at least from my standpoint. And of course, I'm always happy to take questions from the board.
I I think understanding the fund balance piece, you know, this, this limitation protects not only the district, but it protects the board. And but just in case, make sure you have your own personal liability umbrella policy if you don't have one. But I think this is a really important document that protects the taxpayers as well, and it tells us how we can operate. And so especially when you start hearing about kind of a deficit spending that it is because we do have these reserve funds that we dip into. And we've said, this is how much we want to hold in those reserve funds. And when we get to a point where we go over, we need to then consider how are we going to spend those down? And COVID solved that problem for us unexpectedly.
Well, and another thing that I I do want to impress upon the board and the community is that we have set asides for specific reasons as are outlined there, but it's also for cash flow. So when times get tough, believe it or not, the state will occasionally have us run two payrolls in a month before we get a fresh set of state revenue. So in order to be able to execute two payrolls and undertake a loan, a bridge loan, we have roughly thirty, right now, I'm carrying about thirty-eight days of cash. So you know, a little bit more and and just enough to do two payrolls. And that's about it. So we have the capacity. But as you all know, when Olympia is in trouble, that we, they'll be playing shenanigans with the accounting and the timing of their budget activities. And I'm not saying they're shenanigans that are illegal. I'm just saying they push money from one binary into the next. And so occasionally then we might have to double up on a payroll and not get state apportionment. So your fund balance is also there just for strictly cash flow purposes.
It felt like that happened not too long ago.
It did. And that was, I, former union, IA President Doug Jones used to tease me about the fund balance. And then I said, hey, Jonesy, at least you get a paycheck. And we've squared up since then, and he's retired. But it was one of the few times that I I got a little bit of sugar in about being able to run two payrolls with the fund balance. So but it is a common, could occasionally, it's a common occurrence in in recessionary times where cash gets slipped around and crossed by any of them. So.
And there were many districts that did not have a cash balance to be able to do that. Harlan, I see you are off, you're unmuted. Is that because you have something to ask?
I did. So, I mean, Jake, I really appreciate this because the first thing I did is I pulled up last year's and and compared the two, and it's certainly very different this year, which makes me more nervous with if we burned through that much cash just through four months of COVID response and the impact of that. I worry about we have less flexibility than we would have normally had. And I think it's also a consequence of, and I know I pushed this, so I'll own this part, of saying we're not going to run a full authority EP and O levy. And so we don't have as much cash flow coming in because we're running less than we would have otherwise been able to do. So, I mean, part of it is that we wanted to not do that at this moment in time. So but certainly you got my attention by this one.
That was not, not my goal. And on the on the EP and O side, I think we all, we all did what was best.
That's right.
Because you and Director Gallagher, you and I know that if if we ran it to the full authority, we may not have passed it. So going forward, you know, and as we talked openly, that I would, a full authority levy in the next round would probably be prudent, but we're in the place we are now. We got to, we, as you know it from the budget report, we got a good increase in the levy authority from when you're the next. And Um, and. Uh, we're we're gonna we'll we'll be as. We'll be as stable as anybody out there. Um, and Ron and I have told the board many years, we'll manage we. Managing up is a lot more fun than managing down, but we've done it before. Um, it's not our not our first rodeo, as we've said, we we've gone through the great recession. Um. Yeah, we'll come to you if we if we need anything and so um it's not always easy, but we will do it.
I have full confidence in in you and your team, so that's not at all. I was not questioning that at all. I think I was saying like, hey. Uh, you know, this is certainly gonna make it very easier for us to have the conversation on why we need to go for a full authority levy next time because. You know, we've dipped down to our reserves. We've had covid. We've had a lot of things that have been financial. Headwinds that we need to make sure that we um plan for and and reserve for, so.
And we'll get we'll get there as a as a collective and hopefully what they were going to be doing at the at the board dais again instead of. Me staring at you through a little square. Um, but uh yeah, I think. Uh, I appreciate that, Harlan, and um but again hindsight's twenty twenty and um who knows if that levy would have passed, but um I think. We're we'll we'll do the best we can and this will be in legislative matter or next on the agenda, I believe, and um. That's going to be where the the real uh turmoil occurs for us and that's beyond our control. I mean, we can influence what we can't control, so.
Director Moore has a question.
Well, you know, talking about this, um, you know, our cash position being, you know, ten million less than what it was last year. Um, and that relating to covid. So help me understand where that's coming from. Is that coming from the fact that during? The months from, you know, March to the end of the year, we retained all employees like for before and after school care, but yet no one was paying for before and after school care?
That is correct.
Big chunk of it, Director Moore.
And we also um we were receiving some uh revenue for food service for the meals we're providing, but. Um, as you noted in my budget presentation, that we're usually serving seventy five hundred a day. Um, not not seven hundred and fifty. Um, and so again, we were keeping employees uh whole. During a time when we were not receiving revenue for them. So that that's the same for. Um, now transportation continued, but then we also um they've downsized our transportation funding, so. Um, there are some savings in a pandemic, you know, there wasn't substitute costs or as much fuel. Um, but again, the the burn rate to keep um employees whole. Um, during a time when they're the funding, their revenue stream attached to them had evaporated and that's that's what you're seeing in your cash.
And and I think that's important for the community to understand where the state was still funding us on the things the state funds us on. But not for the things that we receive tuition or fees for, like as in food service. On those, we only receive money when. Those services are used and paid for by families.
Correct.
And to, you know, and I know we've talked about this before, um Director Moore, but you know, public school districts are are roughly eighty five percent people. And when you keep the people and you stop the revenue. That was supporting those people, you see what happens. You bleed money out of the system at at a pretty remarkable rate. And um, that's what we experienced last spring, so um that's. That's the challenge there. You know, I did want to note to um you. Eighteen consecutive clean audits. Congratulations, Jake, to you and Martin and uh Mariah and the entire team down there. That's still amazing. I. We 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 tend to gloss over it because it's become common to us. Uh, but I also want folks to know, you know, and I know it's a cliche, but it's one that we live by, at least in the in the budgeting world. We never forget that we're spending other people's money. So that's why we're serious about recouping any outstanding debts or anything like that. We're. We're serious about taking advantage of markets when we can. Our last bond sale, for example. You'll recall we um we delayed it because it was scheduled to go off right at covid and the rates weren't good and because we were patient. Um, we actually turned and got a much better rate, which over the long term of that bond is going to save hundreds of thousands of dollars um to the taxpayers. So there there's a lot of good thought that goes into this. I am nervous about how that fund balance has dropped down and it's shocking that I even hear myself saying that because. I have spent uh the better part of the last fifteen years. You know, as somebody who wants to spend money to further the educational mission, sometimes I felt like I'm just going to say it. Jake was an obstacle to me, but uh much like Doug Jones, I guess I have to say to Mr. Cooper. Um, publicly here, I'm sure glad we had that money. I'm sure glad we had that money because we still have an appropriate fund balance. Um. And so, you know, it's it's one of those things you you just you never know when you're gonna need it, but when you need it, you really need it and.
And why I always tell you, you could only spend it once.
That's right. And yeah, so. Apparently, and you know, we save money by having our lights go off automatically in our buildings too, when there's not enough movement.
The other the other part of the cash burn rate too um. Is the implement the full implementation of the school employee benefit board. Um, in the budget, the budget you adopted last year. We we recognize that it was gonna it was gonna burn some fund balance as well, so that was an expansion of uh. Health benefit coverage, not fully funded by the state. Um, and hit us for four or five million dollars. So that that is. Um, that coupled with the covid cost, the carrying costs and the evaporation of the revenue streams is why you're seeing your cash flow uh bleed, so.
And I remember having that conversation. Around the EP and O levy and how much of the SEB cost? Did we put in the levy and the board and the administration made a joint decision that we would let some of that come out of fund balance? There you go.
Yep. And and I guess based on the levy, I will say this because I know Director Gallagher made a comment that he had pressed for that below full authority levy. I recommended that below full authority levy. I still think it was the right thing to do in the time that we did it. Um, none of us could have ever predicted um that literally. One month later, we'd be closing the schools down due to a worldwide pandemic. I will note, sometimes it's better to be lucky than good. We got our levy across the the door, across the finish line, just literally a month or before the shutdown, so. I can't thank the voters enough for for their support of the system there. And it was touched on earlier. I can't thank the voters enough for passing those capital levies because that's what's given us the technology. To push six thousand computers out the door to our students so that we can have um a good remote learning experience. So. You know, thank you. Thank you, voters.
Hey, any other questions or comments?
I have a quick question. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Um, oh, are you providing public input?
Yes.
Okay, so I didn't ask for that for this topic, but you're welcome to provide public input up to two minutes. So it's an input. It's not a question answer time, but you're welcome to provide us your thoughts.
Okay, no worries. I just be curious uh if it's possible to get a response on other potential sources of cash. Um, I know that there was some commentary about thirty some days of cash available to pay expenses at this moment, which. You know, my understanding is substantially less than this time last year, so I'm just kind of curious. Um, you know, what has been done to access other sources of cash or if there are other sources of cash available already?
Thank you.
Um, and I'll get um. If you, let's see, I'll try to figure out how to get usually if we were in. Frick and mortar, I'd go ask you in the hallway for your number and we I would give you my information. Um.
No worries.
But if.
Yeah, maybe um Greg, if you could send um our our CFO Cooper, if you could send him that question in email.
Okay.
Um, that would probably be the best way for him to respond back.
Glad to respond.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you. Um, any other questions from the board? We do have a motion. And um with that saying, no hands raising, um. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is legislative matters. That would be you, Harlan.
Uh, great. So the first thing is I sent uh the board the summary of the. Eight or so joint meetings between uh the leaders of the House and Senate. Education as well as uh five school directors across the state. So you got a chance to see that a few days ago. It was kind of like a PowerPoint just summary. Didn't know if there was any questions on that, you know, and it came up. What's been discussed childcare, transportation, uh connectivity, equity. Thoughts about what apportionment is, you know, how apportionment is guaranteed essentially through December and then everything's up for grabs, which is kind of makes us all a little nervous. Um, so um wanted to start there.
So uh Sydney.
Yeah, so I'm looking at it and much of it is is statement, so I just wasn't sure what happens, what happens with this summary. Go next. Who is it proposed to next? I'm just not sure of the process.
Yeah, so that that was just basically so from a for a public record standpoint, so people could see and reflect on what was discussed. And the where it goes from now is the House and Senate leadership feels like they have everything they need. They've heard enough and. They can go forth and make bills and policy. Uh, and then we'll have a chance to formally weigh in on that when bills get dropped.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other questions?
Great. The next thing I wanted to do is update you on our work with uh the other five East King County school districts. In addition, last week, we hosted a meeting where we invited uh school directors from across King County, so all of uh DA two. It wasn't a was a sanctioned meeting, but it was uh essentially like a regional meeting as far as attendance wise and. We wanted to uh one, update them on, hey, you know, this is what East King County has been doing. Maybe you have work to share that you've been doing across your. Local regions in King County, and I think the answer was none. Um, and then we also with that mind of equity ever in front of us. We wanted to make sure that nothing that we were doing or planning as East King County was going to have a a negative impact on other parts of our county. And I think we heard that that wasn't the case and they actually were grateful for one, sharing what we've been doing. And um appreciative of the time to collaborate and and network. Uh, so. I'll let Marnie weigh in because she was on it and since I was running the meeting, I didn't get to participate in the breakout rooms that we did.
I thought it was really well received. Um, I did tell Tim, I said, this is exactly what we were asking for. In the springtime, so um but I think the people really appreciated a chance to talk. Um, and hadn't even thought about really talking regionally. I thought I was actually surprised at how the roadmap. Districts weren't really collaborating. I would have thought at least they would have been. Um, so I think it provided a good roadmap for them and um. Yeah, so I it was well attended. I was pretty pleased with how many represent how much representation and how broad it was throughout the uh the region.
And then our Friday meetings continue. Uh, tomorrow we have actually host uh public health for the third time. And uh are inviting all the superintendents because, you know, as we sort of now really nailed on on the policy and guidance. Work that we've been doing with public health, Seattle, King County. Uh, it starts to bleed over into operations and four out of five school boards in Eastern County are policy governance boards. So we really want to live in this box of sort of we live in the policy and our superintendents and administration live in the operations part. And so we're excited about that and believe that they uh. They continue being public health, South King County to to hear us and I think that. Our work we we went through both ways, uh we being like I'll say Marnie and me and Wazza to go through Wazza to try and push on DOH. To release guidance, we got nowhere concurrently in parallel work we're doing. We're reaching out through public health, Seattle, King County. Believing that they probably have a strong voice at the state DOH level and clearly they did. Uh, but I think a lot of the work that we've been doing is reflected in the guidance of the state release and you'll notice the language is very similar. The target groups uh and I I've really been grateful for what they released. Uh, and then we had a meeting today with just. Uh, our district and public health, Seattle, King County to have further discussion on that. Uh, as far as hearing what they need to hear from us and what we need to hear from them. As far as what sort of joint messaging to to let people know like our our rate is already in the moderate category. Uh, we're around fifty to sixty uh cases per hundred thousand in our school district. So and even in our most of our surrounding districts is is at that or lower, uh except to our west. And certainly towards south as our South King County. Uh, so they, I think they. Are grateful to hear and I think they really heard the importance of the timing of it and why it's important that we hear from them now. Uh, our fear was, and it seems kind of realized, is that when. We sent them that three page document of information we needed help on and then all the school districts decided to go remote. I think they felt like, oh, we have time. And I think we made it very clear to them today and we'll make it clear again tomorrow. The window is very small. Between as we approach a low and before the fall season for influenza and respiratory season. To actually have any opportunity to uh do in-person learning, not because the covid risk will necessarily be higher. October one than September fifteenth, but that the fear and anxiety may be higher just by virtue of the respiratory syndrome circulating. It will make people fearful of, I mean, now, what we what we in the medical community would always refer to as influenza-like symptoms. Are now going to be covid-like symptoms, even though covid represents. Less than five percent of positive tests and influenza will be the ninety percent. There's still going to be so much inherent fear. Uh, so I didn't know if Marnie or Ron wanted to weigh in on that conversation that happened.
Well, I think that that piece in communication from public health, being able to have public health make these comments. Public health put together, here's some of the guidelines um is really helpful and and one of the things I mentioned was. Really having public health talk about the the risk and try to. Alleviate some of this fear because much of the communication that most of the public gets. Is from their local newspaper and I said this and I'll be pretty bold, I'll say in in public is that. The newspaper or whatever you see online, those resources oftentimes they're making money. Off of you clicking on them and clicking on their articles, so it pays them for you to be scared. And so how do we get public health to really put set a a just amount of concern? Because we want people to keep doing what they're doing. We want people to be concerned enough that they're going to wear the masks, that they're going to do the hand washing, they're going to do the social distancing. But without having that paralyzing fear that says, I can't go anywhere, I can't go to school, I can't do my job. The way I want to, the way that's best for students. So how do we get in between there and find that's that's soft spot and. Really talk to public health about owning that communication rather than letting the media do it for them.
Yep, I I I would agree, Marnie, and first of all, I really appreciate the effort that the two of you have put forward to. Keep these conversations going, going with our neighbors and going with um public health. I thought today, I've I've sat in a number of meetings with public health, but they've usually been a hundred of us there, you know, fifty superintendents and assistant superintendents. And it's mostly listening. Um, today, we got to have a conversation and really share what was on our mind and how they could help us and I. I couldn't agree more with the the comment uh President Morales just made about. They need to help message the truth related to this. Um, I I don't, you know, that's all we want. We just want accurate, good information. And um they're the they're the authorities on this, not superintendents. Um, sorry, but not school board members. Um, it it it's public health. It's a public health crisis. And I think they I felt, at least I felt, that they they understood that, that um they understood that right now, some of the messaging that's out there. It it's not helping. It's not very accurate and so I look forward to uh more granular data. Uh, more uh regional, you know, by district coming out so that we can. so that we can do some of this analysis of where folks live and is it, you know, what percentage of of our staff are in in low infection rate areas are coming from those? Because I believe that is going to help us. And I was also heartened to, I I've not heard them say that they they don't think that bringing students back in, starting with those the furthest away from educational justice, i- is a bad thing to do. I think that we're we're all aligned with that's what we need to do. We just need to figure out a way to make people feel good about doing that and 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 teachers feel good about doing that and and families feeling comfortable and good about sending their children into those situations. So I I I remain optimistic that we're going to be able to do this, but it's hard. I I'm not going to say it's easy. But I appreciate and I and I look forward to tomorrow's conversation as well.
And then the last thing I would say is, in preparation for General Assembly, which it's all remote this year in late September, we're doing caucuses. So normally the caucuses would be right at Assembly, but we're doing large schools caucus, which happens at assemblies, happens at annual conference. So that's this Wednesday from five thirty PM to seven PM. And an invite is going to come out within the next twenty-four hours for that. So if you want to join me on that, I will be leading that meeting with Tim Garshaw. And then the following night is the Equity Access Caucus, again, five thirty to seven PM. And what we've decided to do is Siri and I are chunking out childcare because childcare is such a big issue, especially for large school districts. And when we talk about equitable access to healthcare, that we're going to chunk that focus topic between the two days. So there's going to hopefully have a continuity of a conversation in addition to discussing pertinent legislative positions in WASA for large schools.
And you have to register online on WASA to get the link to the Zoom meetings. Or whatever kind of meetings, I think there's, or go to meetings, whatever they're using. Okay, anything else or any questions for Harlan? No, then the next item on your agenda, I know you're dying to get to, Board of Distinctions, it's time. I don't want to be the first president in ten years to not be Board of Distinction, folks, so I'm bringing it up. I emailed you the link to the to the board assessment, self-assessment. So I've already completed mine, so no pressure. I'm hoping we can talk about it at the next meeting. So if you guys can have it done in the next two weeks, that would be great. And what I love-
If you really want us to talk about it by the twenty-seventh, we probably have to have it done by next Thursday because it takes them a couple of days to put the report together to send back to us. So don't short us on time.
Well, I don't know what next meeting is going to look like, so I wanted us to have it done by the next meeting so that we can possibly talk about it as part of our wrap-up. But let me see when this is due. So it's due on the fifteenth of September.
So we have to start assigning essays tonight.
Yes, that was going to be the next part of the topic. So I want to be able to at least say we finished the board assessment. So if I can have it done by next board meeting, I can say, yes, we've we've done it. We can still, we're we're not having our our board retreat until October, and that's where I think we'll dig deep into talking about it. So I've started keeping notes about things that it made me think of. And I'll continue to do that once we get it back, because that's what I love about the assessment. And that's what I've told Tim and his team is that we have conversations based off of taking it every year. And so it's always interesting what comes up and what comes to mind. So there's going to be two essays. One is always on the opportunity gap and how we address that for the year. And again, it's just for the nineteen-twenty school year of fun. And then the second question, we get to pick one of three, which is the 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 benchmark. So there's five benchmarks and there's like different parts. It's kind of like a rubric. There are five benchmarks for what makes, you know, an effective board, school board. So we have to write a an essay on one of three that they choose. So the three that they chose is one E, which states promoting healthy relationships by communicating supportively, inspiring, motivating, and empowering others and exercising influence in a positive manner. The other, then the second benchmark could be that we could choose from is providing for learning essentials, including rigorous curriculum, technology, and high-quality facilities. And then the last benchmark we can choose from is collaborating with families and community members, responding to diverse interests and needs, and mobilizing community resources. So we have to choose one of those three to have an essay and then choose two board members to work on it. And then I probably will do the opportunity gap and would appreciate somebody to join me on that one.
I'll volunteer for the second one.
Okay, so you're going to join me for the opportunity gap?
No, sorry, the first one.
Oh.
Which one did you have in mind, Harlan?
I was thinking the very first one, so one E. I think we we I, in my mind, it goes through for, since it's the last school year, so we could reflect on talking about, you know, one, how we've built up this process for, we do student listening sessions and that problem that's thinking about, make sure we do teacher listening sessions. And then our thought exchange and how that, like, how we took what was a really challenging spring and it really drove and made the groundwork for decision-making for this year. So that would be sort of the backbone, at least my initial thoughts.
You make it sound so easy.
So are they just those two? We have to do the opportunity gap and then the picking the one out of the three?
Yes.
Okay.
I would be happy to work with Harlan on the benchmark one.
And I can work with Marnie on the opportunity gap.
Okay, great.
I love that you will wordsmith it for me. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, if you want to, like, bullet point ideas or something, I'm happy to. Well, I mean, we can work together, but yeah.
That's great.
At least they don't have the the absolute word limit anymore. So we don't have to- Last gave me something that was three hundred and ten words and said, cut ten of them out. That's hard.
It's a three thousand characters.
Right, but it's three hundred to five hundred words, so it's a lot of flexibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was also thinking, because there's that little blurb that you have to write about professional development. And an awful lot of those opportunities were canceled.
Canceled.
But I was thinking that you might be able to do something, or I would be willing to even draft something if we wanted to talk about the WASA conference and the fact that Issaquah shared three separate sessions on, based on our experience and what that, you know, what that taught us and how we got to share our ideas with other people. I could-
That'd be fantastic.
I'm sorry?
I said, that'd be fantastic.
Okay. See, I can be useful.
Sydney, did you want to volunteer anything?
Like, wow.
She's a smart one here.
They were fast out of the, you were fast out of the gate tonight.
Yeah, wait a minute, I volunteered for two things and- You can help her.
I'm happy to read and provide input.
That that's kind of how I was, I was thinking Anne and I are very like distinct type people, like, we're going to be very, we're going to dictate a lot of stuff.
You're math-
So you'll refine it for us.
I'm, I do words, yes.
Yeah, you do words. I do numbers.
I do words.
I do speaking, I don't do writing. Okay, so I think that was the big piece of those. So-
Give us a deadline, Marnie.
The deadline for the essays, I'm going to say, is going to be September tenth. That will give me time to put it all together.
And do we still have to, yes, we still have to provide evidence?
Yes, three pages. And so they say if you go over three pages, you get docked points.
No.
And I didn't check to see what day of the week September tenth is, but it looked like a nice round number.
The Thursday.
It's a board meeting.
Yeah, it's a-
It's a board meeting.
No, if we're not done by then, we'll hold each other accountable to that.
Yes. So if I don't get it by the board meeting, I'll give you a hard time.
Deal.
Okay, so then that's that one done. Probably take longer than ten minutes, my apologies. Works in progress, Ron. Anything new that we haven't already discussed?
Yeah, well, I'm gonna be, I've only got a few items because everything's mostly been about the preparation. That I just wanted to note that our extended all administrators meetings began this past week. It it's really been wonderful seeing and collaborating again. Of course, even it's all been done virtually with our building level and district level administrators. This year, we we did move it to a virtual format and we chunked it out in two and a half hour chunks at a time. Although I am here to say, you can do a six and a half hour consecutive session in Zoom because we're living proof of it right now. So here we are. But they they, I I just really appreciate, you know, having them back and the energy they bring and the creative problem solving as well, you know. At the end, we're doing all this work and you heard from my team, but it's going to be our principals and our teachers and our paras and our office professionals that are going to deliver the goods, if you will. So great having them back and and hearing a lot about, you know, kind of the the energy around planning for the coming school year, as unique and unusual as it's going to be. The other thing I wanted to just mention briefly was, thank you again, President Maraldo, for bringing my attention to a meeting with Congressman Smith. We got to have that meeting today, it with myself and all of the superintendents that represent are in his legislative district. It it was, it was good to to hear, he needed to, he wanted to hear from us about what the federal government can do to support public education. And as we move into remote learning and hybrid learning, as we're trying to all manage this pandemic and keep our education moving forward. And then somewhat related to that, I know I copied the board today in an email that I had sent out to all of our state-level representatives and legislators from the forty-first and the fifth. Because, you know, it's just something that I had, just in my own mind, I was just wondering to myself, what's going to happen when half million schoolchildren all hit streaming on our infrastructure, our broadband, Wi-Fi infrastructure? And then when our colleges all come back with everybody being remote and still hundreds of thousands of workers working remotely from home? And it just so happened that I was at a foundation meeting last night and one of the foundation board members had mentioned that he had that concern and he deals with that in his professional life at Amazon and got us thinking, we had a follow-up meeting. And frankly, from there, just, I I don't know that world well enough to be able to say it's going to work or it's not going to work. My whole point in that was just, I hope that somebody is talking to internet providers and they're thinking about this because it's going to come. And, you know, we we can have all the greatest plans in the world and our teachers can be trained and we have the best learning management system, and then your computer freezes up or you can't get connected. And that will be so frustrating to our students and our teachers. So it's my hope that it, that I'm just throwing it out there to to anyone who who works in that industry. We are relying on our internet connectivity and reliability more than we ever have. You know, we've heard it talked about that connectivity to the internet is, in this day and age, it's it's about the same as having running water or electricity in your house. And so, you know, that's just, I want people to know that all of these details are on my mind and whatever I can do to get the questions in the room. It's much like the letter related to transportation infrastructure. I just want, I I want our community to know that myself, our board, our staff, we are doing our darndest to to try to think about all of these things, plan for all of these things so that we can have a good experience for our students going forward. But it's not easy. I I will say that. But so that's, that's all I wanted to share tonight, President Maraldo. Thank you.
Okay, great. Next on the agenda is announcements and correspondence. We've had a bit of correspondence. I do need to go through and I'll have to do it tomorrow to figure out. There were some emails that I think we all received individually that did not get listed here, but I don't have all the names. There was quite a number of them from the Liberty community, and then I think I got some other ones. I also got a written letter from a constituent mailed to my personal address, which takes a lot of effort. So and I will include his name as part of that that I sent to Diane. So it was actually very encouraging, and so I appreciate that letter very much. Any other announcements or correspondence anyone wants to share? Seeing none, we will move on. Calendar and future agenda topics. I don't think we have anything that needs to be calendared immediately. I think everything's been calendared, if I am correct, Diane. You're muted.
Muted, Diane.
You might want to calendar the October board retreat.
Oh, have we not calendared that yet?
It it's on October twelfth and thirteenth. And did you want to do it from nine to five?
I think we set the dates, but we didn't take, do the motion yet.
Right. So it was, was there two dates? There was October and you said October fourteenth?
No.
No, twelve and thirteen.
Twelfth and thirteenth.
Okay, I can, I can do it. I moved the board hold its fall retreat, October twelfth and thirteenth, from nine AM to five PM.
Second. We know, are we assuming it'll be a Zoom meeting? We have physical location, are we doing it on-
If we can, we certainly, we have the, we have the space if we can do it here. I I don't know what what the situation will be.
It will be dependent on how long the Open Public Meeting Act will allow us to meet via Zoom. So that's one of the things that prohibits some of that because that's, that's a public meeting. I personally, for a retreat, would appreciate being able to be in person. Those are long days and-
Well, I think we just have to wait and see what the 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 OPMA waiver looks like at the time.
The location to be determined.
Right, location to be determined. I think if we're under ten, it will likely be okay. It may limit how much staff can come into the room besides the five of us and Ron.
But you're assuming then that there will be no public.
Right, see, since it's-
Because it's a public meeting.
I thought we were barred from actually having it in person.
Well, so that'll be up to whether or not the OPMA has-
Yeah, under, right now you wouldn't, but I don't, you know, they they keep revisiting that at the end of every month. So I'm assuming they're going to revisit it at the end of August.
Well, I'm glad they did it for a whole month. They was, they were doing it week by week there in July. It was crazy. So time to be determined. So we have a motion. Is there any other discussion? Are those times good for you guys? Just to make sure.
The work.
Okay, so all those in favor of the calendar motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so it passes. That's action for you there, Diane.
Thank you.
Thank you. I thought we had already calendered that. I thought we had already made the motion. Anything else about calendar or future agenda topics? So I think we'll worry about those. But if you're thinking of topics that you want to talk about at the retreat, feel free to email them to me and I'll start consolidating those. Definitely will be a time for us to do review our board assessment. And part of that assessment, we also kind of go through our policies and make sure that we are living by our by our policy. So this is the fun time where- living by our, by our policies. So this is the fun time where we get to evaluate ourselves. The nice thing about that is it may limit how much time staff needs to spend with us during that time. So we'll have a good chunk of, of us time.
I'm not sure how to take that.
It'll be good. We'll be able to talk. I don't know how much the public will really be interested in us talking about our policies bit by bit, but they're welcome to attend. Um, if there's nothing else, for the good of the order, I'm only an hour and forty minutes late, twenty minutes late. So with this.
I think you can take the whole blame for that.
I don't think I can either. I adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.